Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order our city council budget meeting for Monday, March 24th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Smith, if you'd take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Proton.
Here.
Councilmember Keyes.
Here.
Councilmember Whit.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Doyle.
Here.
We have a quorum of seven.
Thank you. Okay, tonight is our continuation of our Budget Department presentations, and we will start with our city clerk, Mr. Brian Smith.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm going to give us an overview of the Clerk's Department as well as the Treasurer. Treasurer is going to be a little bit briefer because we're kind of working without one right now, but what I'm going to do is I'm kind of going to kind of outline what we did last year, where we were, and where we're going. So, quick, we'll start with doing a brief overview of the Clerk's Office organization. So it is myself, my deputy Jake, our office manager Lisa, and then Deanna, who is our part-time floater. Deanna also helps out floating between the Clerk's Office departments and the Treasury Office departments. So she backs up water, she backs up cashier. Her base of operations is in Clerk's Office, but we deploy her wherever we need her throughout. So a quick 2024 year in review. It was a big year for elections last year, so presidential election years are always big, takes up most of our focus, most of our time in an election year. So we did have the presidential primary, the state primary in August, and then the presidential in November. It was also the first year where we had the early voting, Proposition 2 early voting implementation. So that was kind of a learning curve, learning processes we went through. Good news is by the time November rolled around, we, a lot of the public had embraced early voting. When we started in February, we had 232 people over nine days in February, and then that number dropped to 140 for August. So it was kind of worrisome, like, okay, maybe people aren't going to do early voting. And then we had over 400, close to 400, the first day alone in November. So we totaled 3,281 people who did early voting in November. The nice thing about that is they say it's going to take some of the stress and the lines off Election Day. Garden City likes to be unique, so what we found where other cities, it was, you know, a lot of your Election Day traffic did early voting. Here in Garden City, it was a lot of the normal absentee voters did early voting. So we still had about the same turnout on Election Day in the precincts. We just had fewer AVs. With that, we had a 69.37 voter turnout rate for November. We were 140 voters away from cresting 70%. So, but the 69.37 is the highest voter turnout we've had in the last 40 years, so I will take it. We did, trained over 90 election inspectors over the year for administering the election. With the proposal 2, a lot of new election costs came to this, so it kind of ties into what I'll talk about with our budgeting for elections. We did have to do additional equipment for early voting, just the staffing of nine days three times during the year, so 27 days of staffing for early voting, additional public notice, things like that. Good news is we made use of a lot of reimbursements that were made available to us in 2024. The presidential primary, if you're not familiar with it, because we're basically administering the primary on behalf of the parties for them to select their presidential candidates, there's a lot of reimbursements out there. So because we keep detailed records of what we spend, I requested $57,576.44 in reimbursement for February, and we got $57,576.44 back. Also, for August and November, through the county, we were able to get reimbursed up to $15 an hour for our early voting workers. So we paid $17 an hour for our workers and 20 for the chair. So after our reimbursement, we got a little bit over $6,000 for August. We had a couple extra workers for November, so we've put in the request for about $9,000 for November, but I'm optimistic that it's all there and we'll get that back. So even though we're paying $17 to $20 an hour for our staff, it really works out after reimbursement to be about $2 to $5 an hour. So, continued cost savings going forward is the switch that I have to give credit to my predecessor, Matt Miller, for doing the switch to the even-year elections for our local elections, continues to save us about $30,000 for each election because all these communities that are having their local elections this year, a lot of those costs fall on the community. By us piggybacking on state and federal elections, a lot of stuff like our ballot printing, things like that, is covered because we're administering it for state and federal races. So that's a continued savings going forward. Future cost-saving opportunities, the permanent ballot list was another proposal to change. With the permanent ballot list, it's going to reduce that duplicate postage of having to send an application out to the voters, and then when we get that back, sending the ballot. We have over 4,000 registered voters already on that permanent ballot list, so when it comes time to do our ballots, we just send that ballot out to them, saves us the cost of postage on the application. Also, we looked into precinct consolidation to try to reduce our precincts, to cut down on the number of staff. We have to train for that. My goal for that was basically to take, you know, precincts at like Memorial and Lathers, where you have two precincts there, kind of combine that into one larger precinct because the state law, the cap on the number of voters you can have in a precinct has gone up from 2,999 to 5,000. After going to a workshop on it, discussing what has to go into it, and basically discovering that to just simply combine those two, that's going to create a large precinct that probably isn't going to be cost, you know, be cost prohibitive to do, but it was an option that we looked into. We're always looking for things like that where it's like, okay, maybe we can reduce our costs this way. Through the workshop, the only way to do that, we discovered like the juice wasn't worth the squeeze on that. So, they said maybe possibly after the next census in 2030, when we have the population numbers, we could just do a wide-scale redistricting of the precincts, but for right now, our precincts will remain what they are. Couple of quick things about city council. We had 30 meetings, including workshops last year, generated 111 pages of minutes, 202 resolutions, which was about 40 more than the year before, and 11 ordinances passed. In the Clerk's Office, we did 1,029 birth certificates purchased. We used to do filing of birth certificates and, you know, the processing of the requests. As you may be aware, Garden City Hospital no longer has the birthing center, so we're not getting those active first-time birth registrations with us, but we still remain the filer of record for local birth records here. A lot of these purchases come because of the Real ID implementation. A lot of people go to Secretary of State, whatever they present to them as their birth record, they're like, no, that one's not an official one, they have to come see us, and that's really driving a lot of those purchases over the last few years. We do still file all the death certificates for individuals who pass away in Garden City. We did 358 last year, and we had 444 purchases. We did 436 business licenses, both new businesses and renewals, and issued 698 animal licenses. We did 243 FOIA requests. The FOIA requests, we've noticed a decided upswing on the amount of requests we're getting. We're less than three months into the year so far this year, but we're on pace to break over 300 requests. So it is a, one of the time-consuming parts of the job is the reviewing and redacting of those documents. We had 12 bid openings, and we did 148 garage sale permits. So I do that to kind of tie into where we're going for 2025. So this sheet is a projection of revenues for our department. So kind of across the board, we're kind of seeing reductions, business licenses. This past year, we've gone through a new process to kind of go through and, basically, go through and improve our efficiency, clean out some records that the business may be gone, but we haven't cleaned them out of the system yet, so we're still counting, you know, we're still counting that as, oh, this is revenue that could come in, realizing, nope, that's not going to come in. We're basically, I projected a slight decrease because we're just kind of projecting, are we going to bring in more new businesses than businesses might close? I like to take the safe conservative approach and be like, okay, let's account for maybe a small decrease in that. Animal licenses, our animal licensing has gone down over the last year. It's definitely, when we had a full-time animal control officer, that really helped get our animal licenses up. When we don't have that full-time animal control officer, a lot of it, our licensing relies upon the honor system for those who do have their pets licensed, or if we get reports of, hey, there's a dog at this address that's not licensed. The full-time animal control officer, definitely, we, when we had one, we noticed a lot more animal licenses being issued. Birth and death records, we're still seeing a decrease because we're not getting those initial birth records anymore. We would be doing really good if the hospital was still a birthing center, but the last full year that they were in operation, we did 532 new births. So I calculated the numbers, and if 400 people got their birth certificates through us for their newborn baby, that's $8,000 in revenue if they just got one each. So that's a potential, you know, if everyone gets it, we're looking, you know, $10,000 in revenue that we could bring in. But basically, going back and looking at the previous budgets, kind of seeing, I think over the past couple of years, it's just like, okay, well, what did we do last year? Let's increase it slightly a little bit more. I kind of took the more realistic approach on this, and we're like, well, we're not getting those new births, so I scaled it back a little bit. The other thing, good from a community health standpoint, is a lot of our budgets that we're figuring for death certificates, the first couple of years of COVID, we were seeing a lot more death certificates come through our office. The good news is we are seeing less, so that means, you know, less people are passing away, so that's good. But a lot of our budget numbers we used previously, I think were based on that uptick we are seeing in 2020, 2021, so I kind of scaled that back to a more realistic level of where we are now. Good news, projected growth. So with the implementation of adult-use recreational marijuana, that comes permit and permit fees. We have our first one that has applied and has provided the $5,000 fees for the three different components of the thing, of the operation. That is an annual fee, so we're looking to see an increase in there. So everything all considered, you know, even with, I said, decrease, 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 with the marijuana revenue, we're projecting about a 3% increase in revenue to the department, mostly offset by those adult-use recreational marijuana permits. For our election revenues, we get our election revenues from two sources, state grants and county reimbursements. So currently, there's no projected election revenues for fiscal year '25, '26, because most people will see, you know, like, they think elections, okay, August 2026, the reimbursement opportunities will come into the '26, '27 period. The good news, we keep detailed records of what we spend, so when those periods open up, we're ready to go and try to get anything we can. The one caveat I put on that is a lot of these grants and reimbursements are contingent upon the availability of funding from state and federal offices. So when the federal departments stop handing out money, it's harder for us to get it, but we will be ready for it. But that is where we go through, like I said, I think because we keep detailed receipts for everything that we spend election-related, that we can provide proof of, you know, what we got it for, what it's for, how it benefits the city, and then helps us get the money when those opportunities present themselves. Talk a little bit about expenditures that we have throughout the department. We have general reductions in expenditures across the department wherever we could. You know, our department is, a lot of our costs are pretty much fixed on what they're going to be. The personnel costs are dictated by the contractual agreements. I'm just going to highlight a couple of the areas where we've made cuts or adjustments to it to kind of let you know what's going on with that. The account, the first account there, the 726-200, that's a postage account. What we used to do is all our postage, be it Clerk's Office or election-related, just came out of one account. We've split that so we can keep track of what we're spending as a Clerk's Office versus the required election spending, so it's kind of better to keep a track of which one is for, so we can kind of cut spending where we can, but the election, we're kind of tied into, we have to send out the voter ID cards, we have to send out notices, things like that. The account that is the 801-400 is contractual professional services. Last year, we budgeted $6,000 for that. We use less than $1,000 so far on this. We kept it at $1,000 to cover our vital records, scanning our death records, so we don't have to pay, you know, our staff to sit there with a scanner and do one at a time for it. It was like, less than 200 bucks, we send it off, we get that done, and also to cover any safety paper that we have to buy for the birth and death records. It's a state standard paper that we have to use, so that we keep that in there to cover that because we use the state contract cost on that. The account that is the 860-100 and the 960-00, those are our meetings, conferences, and workshops, and our education and training. We reduced that from what it was by about 500 each on those. We put, left some money in there that I want to utilize if it is beneficial to us. Like, I don't want to use that money if it's just, no, I'll just go, you know, to this conference. I wanted to make sure it's, we budget that money for opportunities that I think would be beneficial. Key point being, example, the last workshop I went to, the whole afternoon session was on the precinct consolidation. It was very helpful to go sit there and learn and see what all we would have to do, and I'm glad I went because otherwise, we would kind of started, possibly started down a path towards, you know, something that would ultimately not be cost-effective for us to do right now. And then, like I mentioned, our increases in our personnel costs, the bargaining agreements. We're also, one thing I want to talk to council about in terms of election expenditures, is just because we do not have an election in this fiscal year, doesn't mean we don't have expenses in this fiscal year, because we start gearing up for the election season well before the action. People think, okay, August and November next year, but it's really, by the time July 1st hits next year, like I said, we will have sent out absentee ballot applications, we will, I actually already sent out our absentee ballots for August. Election supplies, we want to reorder and get everything lined up and ready to go so we don't have to scramble at the end, be like, oh, we need more envelopes. Required public notices, telling you what's the last date to register, where our public testing will be, and the equipment testing itself is all going to fall into this fiscal year '25, '26 umbrella. So we, I know when we looked at the budget line items, like, it seems like quickest, simplest way to cut money off, it would be like, okay, well, there's no elections this year, take it all to zero, but we can't just because we're going to be spending money leading up to it. Couple of notes on the expenditure accounts for election. We do have no election worker expenditures for this one, so that's nice because we were, I think, over $50,000 for the workers for the three elections last year, so we did take that one down to zero for this. We're kind of, we're going to shift away from using that 726-400 as an election-related catch-all account. If you looked at last year's budget, it just said election supplies, and it was like a $60,000, you know, allocation there. I want to divvy it out so we know exactly what we're spending the money on, because election supplies could be in a lot of things. So what we're doing is, we've got, we're using the 775-100 account for equipment maintenance. That would be something with a tabulator that needs replaced. A lot of times when they come and do the testing, they'll look at the voter, the accessible stations, and be like, okay, well, you need a new touchpad, or you need new headphones. So that's actual equipment that needs replaced or repaired. The 931-000 is maintenance contract. That is $6,600, and that is our maintenance agreement that we have to pay to Dominion, who is our equipment supplier, for them to just do upkeep on it, regardless of if they, you know, if we need anything new, just when we got the equipment, the initial cost, they covered for the first five years of the contract, but now we're on the hook for $6,600 each year. So I moved that out of election supply so we know exactly what that is. That's in the maintenance contracts. And then also the 801-400 contractual professional, this is the one that we will use for the cost of testing because we do use a third-party vendor to do our equipment testing, so we've moved that out of the election supplies and into the contractual. So it's just kind of better, keep note of like where we're spending money, so it doesn't look like, oh, you spent $20,000 on supplies when most of it is $6,600 for an agreement that we have to pay and our testing that's going to be required for the August election. Talk a little briefly about the Treasurer Department. Like I said, with former Treasurer Erby leaving last week, so I'm going to kind of touch base on the big points of what we're doing in Treasury. I haven't gotten a chance to look at each individual line item, and I'll just, she was working on the numbers before she left, but this is the structure of the Treasury Department. You can see right now, our state treasurer is vacant, but under the treasurer, we have accounting, tax and assessing, and utility billing. So Jennifer in payroll, Alma in accounting, and Nikki, who does our AP. On the assessing cashier side, we have our assessing technician Greg, and our account clerk slash cashier Kelly, and then in utility billing, we have Rachel. So over on the tax, Treasury side of things, last year, they mailed out 23,756 tax bills. They heard 86 appeals to the Board of Review of people's property tax assessments. They logged 920 property transfer affidavits, billed 187 miscellaneous receivables, and Greg oversea, saw nine different special assessment districts. We have 180 employees on the payroll. We issued 3,522 checks through AP, over 70,000 water bills, and they had over 1,400 meter repairs or final read appointments. So the key main points that we're looking at in Treasury right now, in the absence of day-to-day treasure we have, we have two current accounting gap agreements to assist with the department, Plant and Moran and Manor Costerian. Any costs associated with these agreements are going to be billed to that 801-000 contractual service account. The hope is, the sooner we find a qualified Treasury candidate, the less money we will spend on the gap services, but we'll continue to utilize the gap services until we do find a suitable replacement. To reduce personnel costs on the Treasury side of things, the department, we have eliminated one position. There was a account clerk, too, that operated out of the utility billing. When the last person left, the position became vacant, and we have no plans to fill that position. Also, we had started the implementation of a deputy treasurer position. That is put on hold with no plans to, in the immediate future, to go into getting a deputy treasurer. And we have also started training staff to back up positions that currently do not have a backup. We're optimistic that this will reduce the cost of overtime, because right now, we have two positions in accounting and payroll that do not have a backup. So if they're not able, if they're not here, when they come back, that's backlog that they have to do. Sometimes it results in overtime, so we are training our staff to have a backup so we can cut down on the overtime costs on that. And like I said, that's a brief overview. Thanks for your consideration and your time this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Smith on either the Clerk Department or the Treasurer Department?
Mayor?
Councilmember King.
You had mentioned equipment, those GL 215-762-6801 for the equipment maintenance. Is that reimbursable also, or?
So, some of it is. So, like, the, for the presidential primary, the testing that we did, that's reimbursable. A lot of, you know, if you get creative, so it's, you know, if you need new equipment, a lot of the stuff with the equipment grants that you have, when they implemented Proposal 2, it was like, here's your one-time, you know, opportunity, anything that you need equipment-wise, put in for it now. You can, you know, basically, our new tabulators that we have for early voting, we didn't get reimbursed for, but we got it through the county, got it from the state, and it was like, here's your one time to see us, you know, get the equipment you need. So we were able to take advantage of that to get a backup, a new one for early voting and a backup for early voting, so.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just had a comment. I want to thank you because it sounds like you're really being proactive and looking for, you know, cost savings for the city in your department, and kind of overseeing the Treasurer's Department right now.
Yeah, so, well, thank you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you. Further comments, questions from the table? Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Next up is our Community Development Director and DDA Director, Planning Committee Director, Building Director, Mr. Matt Miller.
Good evening. Just waiting for my presentation to be uploaded up there. Good evening again. So we'll kind of start right away and just kind of talk about the Community Development Department and kind of the duties that I oversee and what, what areas of the city that are affected by what I'm doing. So of course, the Building Department, planning, both the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals, the DDA, also looking at residential, business, industrial development, Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and the Property Maintenance Board of Appeals. Some of you might not know what the Neighborhood Stabilization Program is. That is where we, the city, has what is called the Right of First Refusal for properties that are lost via tax foreclosure from Wayne County. Wayne County is, Wayne County is a tax foreclosing, foreclosing agency for the city, and they give the cities what is called the Right of First Refusal so that we can acquire properties via the tax, the back taxes that are owed on the property. We also have an agreement with a company that if it's going to involve a rehab and a resale, we have a contractual agreement with a company called HP Snap that will actually take the property, rehab it, and put it back on the tax rolls. Part of why we have to have a third-party agency is that the city, we can partake in the program, but we cannot benefit from any of the profits of the program according to the program. Also, the Property Maintenance Board of Appeals is the Board of Appeals where, of course, first of all, if somebody has a disagreement or doesn't agree with an interpretation from the Building Department, they have the right to go to what's called the Property Maintenance Board of Appeals so they can appeal a decision of the building official. But also, that board also oversees property maintenance, which is, I call it demolition by neglect, where if somebody owns a property and they're not maintaining the property and it has gone so far past the ability to be rehabbed, then we go through what's called the Property Maintenance Board of Appeals. And, or, yes, through Property Maintenance Board of Appeals. And this was kind of on Crowder, if you're familiar, there were two properties on Crowder this year that we put through the program where, in the end, we did not end up demolishing the structures, but we did kind of facilitate the person selling the properties to move on from his ability to rehab the properties. One of the properties was demolished, one was rehabbed and is back on the, of course, the taxes are being paid, and of course, somebody is living in the structure. The hope on Crowder also is that it is in the multifamily zoning district, they acquired two lots, so they're looking at actually doing a couple more units and just a single-family house that was on there. You can do that as a matter of right on Crowder Street in the R2. The next is kind of a flow chart of what kind of I'm responsible for. It looks kind of like an octopus, I think, and there's tentacles everywhere. So I think that's important because the Community Development Director does have to pay attention to all departments, of course, and look at what's happening, of course, within the city according to development, outside the city also. But you can kind of see the C measures at the top, then I'm at the middle in the orange there, and then it kind of branches off into planning, building, and the DDA. Also, just above in those, the yellow there, there are four boards that I attend and also run as the secretary to those boards, set the agendas, and also Brian helps with the notifications that I prepare for all of those boards. Part of the process, of course, of course, the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Property Maintenance Board of Appeals, is that we have to Also, just above in those, the yellow there, there are four boards that I attend and also run as those, secretary to those boards, set the agendas, and also Brian helps with the notifications that I prepare for all of those boards. Part of the process, of course, of course, the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Property Maintenance Board of Appeals, is that we have to follow certain notice requirements that you have to notify the property owner, mortgage holders, and also proper, people within either 300 or 500 feet depending on what their request is. And so, but that kind of shows you where we're at for kind of the flow chart and our organizational chart for myself and who I supervise and see on a daily basis. Kind of the biggest and the busiest department that we have is the Building Department, and I just wanted to kind of look at all of the review, and you can see all of the permits that were issued, permit inspections. I also broke it out onto the three trades. So as you can see, they are busy and out there, the trades only work usually one or two days a week. They do plan, review, and inspections on those days. The signed permits are handled through both the Building Department and actually I review and Mario from McKenna reviews also. We also did 20 vacant property inspections. That was an ordinance that came on the books a couple of years ago, and we coordinate that with Kelly Kovach over in Police to go out and handle those inspections for the vacant property ordinance. Also, in the Building Department, we do commercial CFOs, certificate of occupancies, and also residential certificate of occupancies, and the rental registration. So we have a three-year cycle for rental certifications, and those come up every three years. And then, of course, regular CFO inspections, that's either for, for sale and, for sale, and also the commercial CFO inspections. We did handle one NSP last year, two dangerous buildings, which I mentioned were the Crowder Street. I also wanted to talk a little bit about online permits, and last year, we got the online permitting up and running. That was part of, one of the goals of the city was to take advantage of technical, technological advances, and so we do have online permitting, and we did track that this year. 680 permits were applied for online and 673 inspections were scheduled. So part of the online permit is that a person has, has the ability to schedule when it meets their time, and then a calendar event goes on for the inspection that they're required to have, and it goes right to the inspector so they know on that day they're going to go to this address, the contact person is this person, they have the address, everything is there for them. Of course, as I kind of finalize, final out the Building Department, I do want to, of course, talk about our good relationship with Bichelli Associates who handle our inspections. There's a contract with them. And also, I do want to just kind of call out that we have, you know, four people there in the office almost every day, the four inspectors, Mark, Kurt, Paul, Alex, and then the three trade inspectors that are out, you know, on a weekly basis. But we do have a good working relationship, not only with the company, but with all of the employees that we have there. You know, we talk to each other, we solve problems together, we interpret the ordinance, we interpret the building code together. I think that it's just worthy of note that we have that relationship and that also that the inspectors are familiar with the city and they're familiar, excuse me, with different property owners and what to be looking for. So I do want to talk about that, so. Then, of course, the Planning Division, our year in review, we did have 11 Planning Commission meetings, and the secretary to that board. Also, kind of part of being the secretary there is I able to make reports and also comment on questions that are asked about the ordinance and from the chairperson. Four ZBA meetings last year, total 650 zoning inquiries. So Mario works one day a week, and since I've been on board, I've been able to answer questions about zoning inquiries on those days that he's not here also. We work together on Thursdays to, of course, discuss interpretation, discuss plans that people are trying to do on, at different properties, and so it's good to have him here and also to look at zoning amendments as we go forward. Also, we did eight-site plans, one special land use, and then also now we have a certificate of occupancy and a use statement for every new business that comes in. So we have the property owner, business owner, declare exactly what they're going to be doing there, and then the use statement is entered into the record, and we keep it in BSNA. Also, two big batches of zoning ordinance amendments were done, and that's where the Planning Commission had kind of groups of ideas and things like that that they wanted to move forward. And then also, part of the master plan was the elimination of the O1 zoning district. That was the Office zoning district, and that was converted to the C1 zoning district. And then I do have some kind of highlights for the Building Department, budget highlights, revenues 648,000, expenditures 726, and then planning, total revenues 11,900, expenditures are 102. Part of the, part of the fee schedule, which later you'll be getting the, I think it's there, the budget on your, on your places, is that on the fee schedule, I went through with a fine-tooth comb and made a lot of recommendations for increases in fees throughout to help with the revenues generated for the Building Department. I looked at other communities surrounding us and our fees, some of them hadn't been touched in some time, and it was important to look at that to create a balance, of course. We don't want to make it where people aren't pulling permits, but we also want to be able to cover those costs and look at those costs. Part of the costs through the Building Department is that we, of course, are paying Bichelli. We retain a portion of that, and then we have two staff members of full-time, who is Brenda, part-time Margot, who works the counters, to handle, of course, all of those kind of 6,000 inquiries or contacts with people. Actually, I did a little math of itself, but in, in general, we had 6,868 inspections, and that means that we were in contact at least with 132 business owners or residents a week, and of course, that's with the inspectors, but then they, of course, they, if they didn't do it online, they came to the counter, they had contact with the staff member there to schedule the inspection, and of course, that has, the 6,000 number has nothing to do with the just daily questions that are asked at the Building Department and people inquiring on the phone. Phones are busy, and we, of course, all take turns answering those, make sure that we provide service to the community. And then the next is the Downtown Development Authority. So I am also considered the Downtown Development Director, and the Downtown Development Authority in turn pays the city $70,000 a year for the services provided from the DDA. And of course, we had Board of Trustees meetings, Three Lucky Squirrel events, Chili Cookoff community event. All these community events, of course, are what we would consider as a promotion for the city and to get people to downtown and to highlight our community. The Christmas tree lighting, and also just this year, I, I want to kind of give a shout out to Gary Carter, and the installation of the lights this year, I think were really, I think particularly very nice. And each night I went down there and you, it really defined the area and created a really nice kind of focal point for downtown. I hope he does as good next year. We're going to trim some of the trees, so hopefully you don't trim some of the branches that he was using for the lights, so. And actually, I've been in communication with him about which trees needed, so. Also, the light pole flowers, of course, last year, they did well. We had a lot more rain, so of course, I think the rain helps along with the irrigation. The Commons Flowers, the Garden Club did a great job there in doing that. Streetscape Maintenance, which Gary does also. Hometown Hero banners, that went up last year, and then this year, we're going to do it again. Thank you for giving me the time at the last council meeting. I did a little commercial, we need to fill the spaces, and we're full, and we actually are starting a waiting list, so hopefully it's funded for next year. So thank you for that. Also, for 2025 business incentive grants, part of the DDA, the, the budget for next year is, we're kind of changing some of the business incentives to help attract business owners or that want to come, and then also existing business owners in the district to do facade improvements, get some architectural help, and also some help with signage to bring it up to code or make changes to their sign. So we are, in July 1st, going to kind of roll out the business incentive grants in the downtown. Also, this coming up year, we've got the parking lot, Seal Coat and Restripe of the Northeast Quadrant, kind of where the Lucky Squirrel is and behind Garancy Cafe, Jody's area, and also that alleyway at Elite Eye Care is, you know, in very poor condition, and we're looking to replace that. Kind of the, next is the DDA budget highlights, total revenues of $671,000. Those are all of the, kind of the highlights of that budget. And included in there, of course, is publicity and promotions, which handles the Lucky Squirrel, the Chili Cookoff, all of that. And then also parking lot improvements, those will do the Seal Coat and Restriping. But one of the things I wanted to point out is the fund balance, the bottom 839-505. I'm working on trying to build up the fund balance again so that we're prepared to do some improvements in the downtown. Specifically, I'm thinking the Kmart property, the parking lot back there. The city doesn't own all of that property, we own a very small portion of that, but I'm going to kind of start a working group with the business owners there to talk about the parking lot, its condition, and to look forward to, we need to do something over there. Now that, of course, almost all those businesses are full, we have a parking problem, which I always think, there's never a bad parking problem, is that every city planner should, I think that should be our mantra, there, parking problems are good because that means people are coming here and using our stores, coming to our community, and I think that's a good thing. So the fund balance is important, and we're trying to, of course, move forward with money there to assist in the development that occurs in the downtown area. And then finally, just the staff level proposed is, of course, myself, full-time, building 1.6, full-time equivalent. The DDA is .25, that's John Prosh, and then, of course, McKenna and Bichelli. Those are the equivalent of what the contracts give us, and of course, the supervision of that, and then the DDA maintenance, I supervise Gary, and he sometimes has his own ideas, doesn't he, Kim? And so, or councilmember told, sorry. And sometimes you have to talk him, talk him down a little bit, but he does a wonderful job, and I give him a lot of credit because he really takes care of our downtown and makes it look very good. We also coordinate with Brad and street sweeping to get street sweeping done down there, too, with our street sweepers. And then, of course, kind of looking forward in 2025, of course, the Mishtha Housing Readiness Grant and Master Plan Amendment, that should be wrapping up this year. The grants, I continue to apply for grants, and I hope that we can get some. I know that the CMAC grant, we did, we did get that, that's a street lighting grant. It won't come online until 2028, but still, I've got the documentation that we've got the money, and that's for the conversion of LED from our mercury vapors, streetlights to LED, and I, it's about 500 of those lights to do that conversion. Part of that is, is of course, it's a reduction in energy, but it's also a reduction in the amount of maintenance that has to occur for those streetlights. So it's important to make this conversion to LED, just like we're doing in our homes, a lot of people are, and of course, we want to do that for the city. Current and new business introductions, part of what I've done is, of course, any new business that comes to town, talk to them about, of course, the ribbon cutting, but also to kind of walk them through the process. We've never had somebody here in many years, I think maybe 25 years when Paul Zelenak was here, I think, to help, help people through the process. If there's questions, I'll be able to, be able to answer the questions, help them through the process at the city. Sometimes some people are kind of scared of what goes on at City Hall, and I think it's important that we have somebody here to not make it scary, I guess, I don't know. Sometimes I, they may think it's scary, I'm not sure. Grant administration, of course, we've talked about sidewalks at the last council meeting. I'm going to still continue to be the administrator, working with our engineer, inspection, and Brad and DPW to get that going. I'll handle all of the reimbursement requests and the sign-ons to the state so that we can do the proper reporting of all of those dollars to go forward. Also, I just wanted to talk a little bit about ordinance amendments, and the last ordinance that we did was the Carnival ordinance, but we did something that we hadn't done in a long time, and we kind of put together a team of employees to work on that ordinance. So we had police, ordinance, fire, the clerk, myself, and actually Parks and Rec were there. I'm all in the room looking at ordinances and coming up with a collective agreement about what would be the best to make that change. I want to continue that so that we can have a good working relationship with all the departments, but also get their input so that, so that the ordinance that's presented to you is a good ordinance and it's enforceable also. And I've been working on available properties of, in the city, the DDA is complete, and now I'm working on the entire city, just a contact of who owns the property, is it listed, all of that. And of course, it's so, it's, it's kind of like a moving target because we are, of course, properties are selling fast, we're getting inquiries quite quickly, and of course, it changes on a daily basis almost. And then also this year, I, and last year, I've kind of been working on the Brownfield Property Tax Credit, which is a result of Public Act 90 of 2023, and that is where Brownfield Redevelopment Authorities can be utilized for housing. It added a housing component to that Property Tax Credit Program, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. So we're looking at that, and I'm learning and maybe look forward to the future to help with increasing housing in the city. It could be a tool for us to use. And then I do want to attend the MDA and MAP conferences. Part of the MAP conferences for my certification for the American Planning Association, we're required to get continuing education credits for that, so. But with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions or comments for Mr. Miller?
Mayor? Oh, go ahead.
Councilmember Hughes.
Mr. Miller, I want to thank you for wearing so many, so many hats in our city and all these positions that, you know, that you're working through and work with, you know, all the, all the projects you have. I want to thank you for, for all the, all the work you put into all this.
You're welcome.
Councilmember King.
Mr. Miller, you mentioned that the fund balance, you're looking to build that up. Do you have a target of where you want it to, to be at?
Well, I, I would like, of course, more than a million to work, so I'm working on that. You know, each year, you know, in the last three years, we've, you know, incrementally put money away to build towards a fund balance. And so next year will be over a million, and I think they'll position us to hopefully assist, you know, the property owners will still be responsible for some of their repaving costs, but maybe assist with engineering. Also, that driveway through between the banquet hall and the gymnastics off of Middlebelt really needs some safety enhancements, and I think that maybe we could utilize the funds for that also. And then, you know, I like trees, so maybe a little landscape and some of those islands and things out there that, to help reduce kind of that sea of pavement look out there.
All right. I guess my next one's just a comment. I noticed you talked about this tree lighting, and I noticed this year, the lighting on the trees up and down Ford Road and Middlebelt, we extended it, kept them on, kept the lights on to end of January.
Yes.
I don't know if that was just a pilot, but I thought it was very nice to extend that season so people can enjoy the lights into January, and hopefully that continues.
Okay.
Mayor?
Counselmember Karafodis.
I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Miller, you said that about the DDA is now complete. Does that mean all the buildings are rented in the DDA?
No, it just is, now that I, I know who to contact for every building.
We, we have all that information, right? And are we getting better luck contacting these property owners?
Yes.
Good. My other question is the...
It's still difficult to find often.
The business incentive grants, how much are those for?
That is for a total of $50,000. Actually, I, thank you for bringing that up. So the budget for the DDA, they allotted for $50,000. And what can occur is that for basically five businesses next year, we would be able to allocate $7,000 for facade improvement, $2,000 for architectural improvement, or architectural plans, and $1,000 for signage improvements. It doesn't all have to be the same one, but the DDA did approve that in their budget, and actually, part of what I was supposed to say, and I forgot, was that on January, on February 18th of this year, the DDA did see the budget that you have before you, and they did approve that, recommended approval to you also.
Do we send something out to the businesses in the DDA to tell them this grant's available?
I'm going to start kind of in June. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a new brochure and get that out so people see that. I'm gonna target a few specifically to that their facades are kind of tired and see if they'll take advantage. I mean, it is, it is... I mean, it is, it is a great incentive to either attract a business or to help an existing business. And I've said before, of course, we want to attract businesses, but the people that have been here a long time, too, we should take care of them, too. And so that's part of the program.
Okay, two more questions. We talked about the rental certificates, or certificates, and it's, is that common, that they're every three years for other surrounding cities?
Yes.
Okay, and then?
But some cities, it's three years, but they make them pay yearly. We only do, we only do three-year payments also, so.
When our fire chief was here, I asked him about fire inspections for rentals, and he said the fire department does not do that. Is that another way to produce income? Because, I mean, to me, renting houses is a business, but they're not required to get the same inspection as the other businesses.
Correct.
Is that something, I mean, I mentioned it to him, and he was wondering about that also, so maybe that's another way to... I think that would be a good idea, that people that rent in here have a fire inspection also, instead of just having our building department do that.
Our building department does, though, pay attention to the National Fire Protection Code and does make the requirements, to make those requirements for smoke detectors clear egress. They do do that in our inspection.
I'm just saying that as a business owner, I have to pay a separate fee to have a fire inspection every year. In my mind, renting houses is a business, especially these landlords that have five, 10, 12 houses in Garden City. That'd be another way to build income for us.
Okay.
And then where are we with the master plan?
We, soon we're going to have kind of the, the first rollout of the Master Plan Amendment. And from the open house, we're going to have that probably in April. We're going to have a, at the planning commission, kind of the rollout for the master plan amendments.
Okay. And then the last question, because I had a million residents comment about this, the Bar 5153. So do you have any idea exactly what's going to go there? Like, is it going to be housing and retail or something else? Or we don't have any idea yet, or?
It's going to be all retail.
All retail, okay.
We also today, just, the developer was in today. We got all the new addresses assigned per units. We reviewed the plans again with him, and he's ready to get moving. We started to establish water connections, all of that. We kind of, we build each, each address has an address, and of course, water. So we started to build that in the water department, too, just to, to help, you know, once it's time, we have to get moving, and it'll help and speed up the process of the development.
Any idea how many individual, I mean, if you said you're putting the water?
I think it was six.
Six, okay.
I think it was six, so. And that starts from Krishna Jewelers and goes all the way to the, the auto repair corner, so.
Oh, I thought he bought the jewelers, too. Did he not buy that property?
Correct. And also actually Oxford Barber, too. So all of that, too, which is just a little east of Krishna Jewelers.
He did buy that?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And then the parking lot behind it also, correct?
Yes.
He's not putting any housing back there?
No, but we've talked about it, so.
Okay, I thought that was on the table somewhere.
And you know, part of the plan for Frankie's or Bar 153 is that a portion of that building is not going to be rebuilt on the same footprint. There's going to be parking behind the building also.
So the retail's all going to face Ford Road, and all the park will be in the back? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Dole.
Kind of along that line. So the former Kmart property, have we started working with that gentleman, or has he still got that on hold?
Why don't, he owns a property, and, and I've talked to him numerous times. I just don't think he's formulated a development plan. He will be part of our working group about the parking lot, of course, because he's adjacent to, of course, the parking lot and has easements and connections through that.
Sure. And I want to wish you luck with that. That's been a, a thorn in our side for, I don't, I don't even know how many years. But I did want to ask you also, you were talking about the CVO use statements. Is there, how are we enforcing that? Or is it just if a, if somebody makes a comment or a complaint to the city, then someone goes out to take a look?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And of course, we, if we see anything, of course, you know, I, I do drive through the city all the time, too, and if I see anything, I do report it, too, so.
Okay. And last but not least, so the 2025 business incentive grants with the DDA. So the, the loan program itself is gone away now. We're just looking at grants?
Correct. Well, it's on hold. We suspended it, was the motion. I didn't want to eliminate it completely, so I want to be able to, you know, you always want a tool on the shelf, so just in case we want to bring it back, of course, we want that there. But we just suspended it, and it will be a grant. The DDA's thought, my thought was that, say the business doesn't go forward, or it fails or something, we've at least got an investment in our community, in the building, and that it looks better. So, and it will be, of course, probably easier to lease again if it, if this improvement is there, so.
Mayor, I have one more question.
Well, last but not least, I, I want to concur with you on Gary. Gary, in all my years at the DDA, Gary never, ever told me no. Never. But he does have some good ideas. I, I believe it was his idea to put the red and white lights?
Yes.
At the Commons this year, in addition to the other ones, which really, just really brightened it up. But, but Gary and also DPW, they were great assets for the DDA, and as you are proving to be, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Karafodis.
Regarding the vacant properties, I know that we did 20 inspections, and that's just commercial.
Yes. I, well, you know, I don't know if we, I'm not sure.
Do we, but do we inspect vacant residential?
Yes, yes. The ordinance is for both, so I, I assume so, but I just don't know if all 20 were commercial.
Okay. And what's the, well, never mind, we'll find out with the fee schedule. Thank you.
I can look and find out.
That's okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments from the table?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, next up is DPW, and that would be Director Brad Omen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Department of Public Works. This is where we stand today. 25 DPW employees, a custodial supervisor, and seven part-time employees in the custodial division, serving over 27,000 residents. We do have one vacancy in the DPW, which will remain vacant this budget year. Also, we are moving our custodial supervisor full-time position to a part-time position July 1. I would like to thank my team for all their hard work and everything we were able to accomplish this year. We have a great group of hard-working individuals on that chart from top to bottom. Operational costs are split between the general fund, water and sewer fund, and Public Act 51, roughly about 1.5 million each. We have 12 full-time employees funded through the water and sewer fund, and four full-time employees that are split 60% water and sewer, 40% general. I think our budget may be more complex than the other departments. As you review the budget, keep in mind that many of our purchases and services can be and are split between multiple accounts, split between general and water and sewer, roads and water and sewer, general and roads, et cetera. Sometimes even split three ways. And anything with roads, we also split 80% local, 20% major. A few examples up there on the screen. I'd like to touch on some things that we were able to accomplish this past year other than our day-to-day operations. We were able to secure over $4 million in a grant from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund for the replacements of the water mains on Marquette between Inster and Middlebelt. Water main looping projects included the connection of dead-end water mains at City Park and Henry Ruff, the connection of three dead-end water mains along Radcliffe. These looping projects definitely improved the water quality in these neighborhoods. Also, the investigation and replacement of up to 180 lead service lines, which our contractor is now working on. We are also pursuing other grants, this kind of work for next year. This past October, we submitted our distribution system material inventory, which was required by the state. This is based off of service line material. This has been about a four-year project. This undertaking required a lot of work by myself and staff, which included reviewing old records, investigating lead service lines by in-house checks, and hydro excavation. Our inventory will change as we move forward with more investigating and as we change out these lead services. As of today, we have 10,987 non-led, 282 led, and 363 service lines of unknown material. Since 2019, we have replaced 431 lead lines, well above the state's requirement. This year, I would like to bring back the 4x4 neighborhood improvement program. This program was suspended a couple of years. This program is designed to target services in a four-block area for up, for up to four weeks. Normally, the area is bigger than just four blocks. The DPW duties will be street repairs, water and sewer structural repairs, street and traffic sign replacement, tree trimming within the right-of-way, inspection and cleaning of the storm sewer system, to name a few. With being a young department that lacks experience, I would like to continue to offer safety training, and I have requested this in the budget. Some of the training will include temporary traffic control, excavation and trench hazard control, heavy equipment operations and accident prevention, confined space training, and water training to maintain our water license. In an effort to maintain our fleet, I have included in the CIP the purchase of a new backhoe. Whether we purchase this this year or next, we do have four backhoes in our fleet, which are our everyday workhorses. The new purchase will replace our 2021 model. And any questions?
Counsel, any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Councilmember Karafodis.
How long do the backhoes usually last?
25 years at the max.
Didn't you just say it's replacing one from 21?
No, 2001.
Okay. That makes more sense then, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Dole.
I just want to commend you for keeping the safety training first and foremost. Extremely important, so.
Okay, thank you. I would also go for the training. I think that's awesome. I know we have a lot of it at our, our work, but you guys probably do a lot more. Okay, any other questions, comments?
Mayor?
Councilmember King. Just out of curiosity, what is the cost of a backhoe?
About 175, 180,000.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Dole.
I'm also curious, when you refer to major and local roads, major being county roads and local being our roads?
No, the, the major roads are like your Maplewood, Marquette, Harrison.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay.
Speaking of roads. We anticipate another slight increase of 2% in Act 51 funding from the state, which will bring it up to about 3.4, 3.5 million in funding of our roads. Our certified road mileage is 101.2 miles of roadway, 21.06 miles of major, 79.96 of local. We anticipate 2.4 million in major road funding and about a million in local. We are allowed to transfer up to 50% of major funding to local. For this year's road bond projects, the projected cost is 4.7 million, 3.7 million in concrete reconstruction, 700,000 in concrete sectioning, and 300,000 in joint sealing. Any questions on that?
Counsel, any questions on major road, major or local streets?
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafodis.
I just want to know if our city manager is going to comment about roads in this section? About what we're doing, which ones? We talked about earlier.
Yes. So actually, on this, the 2025, I believe, is the map that Brad produced. You know, it has what our 2025 plan is, but there was some discussion. If anyone's driven on Maplewood lately, it's starting to move to the top of everybody's list. And as Brad and I have discussed, along with our engineers, that, you know, in the 2026 road bond work, Maplewood becomes, you know, our, one of our major priorities to get that fixed. But at the same time, you know, not to miss an opportunity, we've also made some requests for additional funding through our, some of our local legislatures to get some grant funding to do those roads, maybe even a little sooner, or, you know, utilize that and then be able to use more with road bond on some other places. So initially, we were thinking Marquette in 2026, but as Maplewood has just deteriorated at a very fast rate and is probably out of the two roads of much higher use, given it sits right in front of the high school, is a route by the, is a, is a direct route to the hospital. It's really moved up on our list, and, you know. It's funny, I, I don't like to hear people complain about the roads, but now that we've made the decision, hey, we think Maplewood's worse, it actually gives me some comfort that quite often I get calls about Maplewood. Yep, good, it's on the list, I'm picking the right one. It's not an easy choice, you know, we don't have, we got a lot of roads and not a lot of money to do all of them. So it's nice to know when citizens speak up and prioritize, and definitely Maplewood's getting towards the top there.
But it's not until '26, it's not '25?
Correct, this is '26.
Okay.
Further questions, comments, counsel? Okay, we'll move on to water and sewer.
Okay. As you all are aware, the water and sewer fund is what is called the Enterprise Fund. An enterprise fund is a type of fund used to account for operations that provide services to the general public where the costs are financed through user, user charges. The revenue brought in by these charges have to cover, first, the purchase of the water and sewer, and the disposal of the sewer costs; second, the cost to maintain the system; and third, is for capital improvement projects to upgrade the system. Here's a list of recent water and sewer projects with their construction costs. Since 2016, we have performed many much-needed capital improvement and repairs to our system, including water main replacements that coincide with the road bond projects, sewer repairs, sewer lining, and the replacement of over 400 lead services. For a number of years, we have been passing along the Great Lakes Water Authority rate increase under our water customers without adding additional percentages for the maintenance of the system and for capital improvements, which has led to the fund decreasing significantly over the last four years. I think we are too aggressive in spending to improve the system and did not raise the rates to keep the fund healthy. At the March 10th council meeting, the council approved a professional service agreement with Plant Moran for the water rate study. We're still waiting for that study. This study will guide us moving into the future. Sorry. Sorry. Last month, the Great Lakes Water Authority approved a 5.9 increase in the wholesale water across the board to all its, uh, member partners. Uh, I have included in the CIP the spending of up to $1 million per year for a defined capital improvement plan for water main replacements. I feel this is very important. We have an old system, some of our water mains date back to the 1930s and 40s, uh, but the majority of our system, uh, was installed during the fast-growth period of Garden City, uh, from 1952 to 1956, when sixteen new subdivisions were built. In recent years, we have done a great job, uh, in, in the investment of our roads through the road bond, uh, we need to start investing more into our water and sewer system.
Any questions from, or comments from the, uh, council?
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafodis.
So, Brad, back to the capital improvements, it was great to see this list of all the things that we've done. So, we had a certain balance, you know, five or six years ago, and we've used that. Other than the, the water main looping, that's the 2.7, any of those others are, was from grants, or most of that just came out of our water fund?
Uh, the water main looping projects, uh, the lead water investigations, and, uh, the replacements being done this year.
But everything else, we paid for?
Yeah.
Out of our water fund?
Correct.
That's where all the money went? Okay. Thanks.
Further questions, comments?
Mayor?
Councilmember King.
No, I'd just like to agree that I think we do need to put some money into our water mains, start replacing them. Um, hopefully, that would, of course, reduce leaks, future leaks, operational costs, um, so I do think that's the right direction to go. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Further comments? Questions?
One more.
Councilmember Karafodis.
I, I can just touch on that, and I could touch a little bit on just, uh, what Brad said. Yes, Brad has a pretty detailed capital improvement plan. He and Hennessy Engineers come up with, uh, you know, what they're most concerned about water main-wise, and give us some, um, you know, suggestions on where we should go and how we should fund them. What, I just want to point out about the water fund, as Brad states, he, he has numerous, he's got roads, he's got regular DPS under our general fund, and he's got water, but when you're looking at water, it's a little, it's just a different accounted because it's an enterprise fund. So, you'll see where we'll add capital projects, like a million dollars for water mains next year. That doesn't mean we're necessarily going to, but we need to build in our system, and they base the rates upon these needs that we know we have. So, when Brad talks about a front-end loader or, for, as a capital purchase that's necessary, that's taking into consideration, the water fund needs that as much as all the other departments, but we have to kind of build it into water so that when we're projecting rates out in the future, we know, hey, these are our costs, and keep them realistic, so we don't end up in a position where we might be a little bit right now, was where we've depleted the fund and we need to have a little quicker recovery, so, and, and to more phase those in. Because ultimately, a, as the director stated, it's, it's the, some lines date back to the 30s, and rapid growth, 50s, 60s, early 70s, um, so, as we open up the roads and, and fix the roads, it's nice to be able to have those capital funds to replace those water mains under. We just got to make sure that, uh, we keep the fund at a right pace and, uh, but when you read the budget, to understand, um, basically, our, uh, our budget does not contain, uh, any capital purchases for next year. Um, we're going to try and have a year where we're just trying to rebuild and get ourselves back straight. But in particularly his division, though, we have to take those into account, especially in the water department, because when our, uh, when Plant Moran's doing our study, they have to know what these future costs are going to be, so they can set the rates right, or at least give us a recommendation to set the rates right.
Are you saying that because we did all these things and didn't raise any of the water rates to make up for these things that we spent the money on?
As the director alluded to, we'd been just basically passing on Great, Great Lakes water increases and not increasing our, uh, rates that recognize the increased operational costs and.
That paid for all this stuff.
That paid for all that. So, the, the projects are necessary, and, uh, you know, in particular, when we're opening up a road, uh, to be repaired, and it's there, and we are having exposed water main, it's a great time to do that. So, uh, it's definitely wise to replace water mains where you can do it as cheap as you possibly can. It's just incumbent upon us to make sure we maintain rates at a place that can afford that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Just, uh, for city manager or Mr. Omen, but, um, when the Great Lakes Water Authority, how exactly does that work? They have a committee, so they decide they're going to raise our rates. Does it have to be approved by the state? Is there any, any processes like that, or does their committee just decide they're going to raise rates?
Well, we're, they call, we're all partners in this, so everybody has a voice. We have our representative from Wayne County, Oakland County, that, uh, this is the largest increase they ever had, when, since they formed Great Lakes Water 30, 10 years ago. They've always been 2%, 3%, but again, that they have, to increase their operational costs, they have to pass it on to us.
Didn't they, didn't they originally propose like a seven-point something percent raise, and then?
Yes, and they, they backed.
Whenever it went to the committee, it went back to the five-point whatever percent to pass on? Any other questions or comments? Counsel, any, anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Omen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Parks and Recreation with Ms., uh, Erica Smith, our Parks and Rec Director.
Just to click her out?
Soon as.
Shout out. Huh? I haven't turned it off.
Wait till Mr. King fixes our communications.
So excited to have that clicker. Oh, okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Uh, I'm here to present on the Parks and Recreation budget. I'm going to do a little overview, highlight a couple of items, and then just dive into our three department budgets, which is Parks, uh, the ice rink, and Radcliffe. Uh, Parks and Recreation, an essential service. It is my job as the Parks and Recreation Director to speak to the value and importance of Parks and Recreation services. Um, I don't know all the history of Gardens, Garden City, but I know that somewhere along the line, somebody knew to invest in the park and rec services. Um, the investments made in the city park back in the 60s and 70s that brought about the pool and that ice rink. Um, I've heard many residents speak about their memories going on, uh, their memories growing up, and, um, you know, those are park and rec amenities that have really contributed to the pride and sense of community that still remains here today. Um, over time, it's really hard to make those sort of continued investments into park and rec resources, as we're seeing there's so many competing, uh, needs. Uh, but I do want to take a moment and highlight what makes this particular government service so essential. Um, the economic value, there's a lot of studies about well-kept parks and how they raise property taxes of the homes near them. Uh, we know that big events in our parks and facilities draw people in from, from all over, uh, and impact local businesses. We generate a lot of jobs, uh, for, for teenagers, through retirees, so just all of these little things impact our local economy. Um, health and environmental benefits, you know, green spaces are so essential for offering access, uh, to the activities that promote mental and physical well-being through exercise, play, connecting with nature, connecting with others. Uh, getting kids outside is just getting harder and harder these days, but it's more important than ever. Uh, parks are also our green infrastructure, so stormwater, uh, management, trees that are helping clean the air, really important when you live in an urbanized area, or maybe you have an airport very close to you. Uh, these are important, uh, and of course, nature provides for wildlife and our ecosystem, and really just for us as humans. Um, and then the social importance, so from parks to Radcliffe to the rinks, there's so many activities, uh, in ways that our programs are promoting and building those social connections. Uh, kids to seniors, every day, the Parks and Recreation Services are interacting with our residents. Uh, those communities that are investing in these services are really investing in the well-being and long-term health of a city. Uh, so I want to jump to a few highlights of the last year. Um, the first one is, uh, the grand opening of Radcliffe. So, uh, that was not even a year ago, in May, um, uh, when that facility officially opened. We've seen 3.2 million dollars of grant funds that have been spent over the last few years, and then finally getting those reimbursements back to the city. There's $3 million of projects underway or in progress. Um, there's been a lot of investment, and we've seen the growth in programs, um, and expansion of services. In the past 12 months, we've had 30,000 membership scans at the front desk. Those are specifically park and rec program, uh, people arriving for a service there. It doesn't count the thousands of other visitors who are coming for FRC programs, the food pantry, uh, either of our big long-term renters, all the special and private events. Uh, so, this is a pretty remarkable first year of, uh, numbers when we have construction ongoing and just getting into it. Um, a second highlight I want to share is the, um, kind of long-awaited completion of the city park upgrade. Um, there was a land-water conservation fund grant a few years back for $250,000 that the city matched. Uh, last year, Wayne County Village, um, contributed another $75,000, and the city expanded that playground. If you haven't been out there, that was installed last week, so that's a fit core piece, uh, that is now open for the kids. Um, so almost $600,000 in the infrastructure of, of the playground added to city park. We have cell phone data that has been able to tell us that in the calendar year of November of '23 to November of '24, we had over 314,000 visitors to city park. Those are only the people with cell phones, so it doesn't count kids and pets. Um, but we know that this park is a destination for our residents and for nearby communities. Um, let's see. The third highlight I want to share is volunteers. So, we have all the existing volunteers, uh, who are showing up in huge ways every day to ensure that the food pantry, uh, that the thrift shop are successful in their mission, but we also have so many sport groups and associations across the city, the GCYAA, our youth soccer association, our Parks and Rec commissioners, our commission on aging, all of our community, uh, nonprofit partners. Uh, all of those volunteers together are filling in gaps to create community, uh, offer experiences, and really add joy and meaning and fun in people's lives. I wish I had the volunteer numbers, uh, for all of those things, uh, and how maybe parks interacted with them or hosted events, um, but I can say, um, it's truly one of the remarkable parts of this community is that volunteer history and activism here in Garden City. Uh, new this year is an addition of a junior volunteer club, uh, getting our youth involved, uh, community workdays in the park that we rolled out last fall, really successful, um, as well as some independent litter pickup kits, uh, that we're offering for individuals for either looking for hours or just wanting to, uh, be involved. Uh, volunteers are going to remain to be an important part of our department. Um, you know, I'm committed to prioritizing ways for us to engage and connect with, uh, the volunteers who want to help us navigate through challenging budget times. Um, so, uh, I am here tonight to present on the Parks and Recreation budget. Uh, as a reminder, we have eight parks and two facilities, and they are spread over three , uh, budget departments. This chart you see in the green, this is a, a quick overview. Um, on the left there, we're listing the different budget departments, so you see Parks, Ice Rink, and Radcliffe. If you move over to the middle column, that's what was approved last year in July, uh, for those individual departments, uh, totaling 2.2 million dollars. And we can see what's ahead here in '25, '26. Uh, we see, uh, reductions in each, uh, department, especially in the Radcliffe one, and we're looking at 513,000 less in our operating budget. So, that's a 23% reduction. Uh, so that's what we're looking at here tonight. I'm going to dive in, uh, we'll start with Parks, the 757 account. Um, what I've shared on the screen, what's in your packets, um, hopefully, this looks somewhat familiar. Um, you know, this is the budget report right out of our BSNA. Um, I'm going to kind of go over what we're looking at one time, because we'll see a few other of the departments like this. So, starting in that left column, uh, those are all those account numbers, we've already heard people mentioning those. That's what ties to the specific accounts when we're either spending money or depositing money, we're utilizing those numbers. Uh, we have a small description in that next column over. Sometimes it tells us exactly what we need to know, other times, it's not quite clear what that means. Um, and then when we move over another column, we can see the '23, '24 activity, those are the actuals, that's what, uh, that last fiscal year ended up as. Those are the numbers, uh, they're used as a reference. Um, the 2024, '25 amended budget, that's what was approved in July. Um, in red, you'll see the additional amendment numbers, those were the amendments that happened earlier in the month, making adjustments to, uh, our budgets at this point in the budget year. Um, the middle column is the activity through February, so these are the numbers that tell us where are we today, or in this case, on, uh, February 28th. This helps us project, so the next column, the '24, '25, that's what we're projecting, we're going to end up in June 30th. And then, the very last column, uh, is really our city manager's budget, uh, what we're, what's being proposed this evening. Um, so those are all the columns, um, I wanted to just go over that briefly, and then talk about a couple of items in the revenue section. You know, Parks is a non-fee, uh, amenity for the most part, we don't charge people to go to Parks. Uh, we do have some revenue opportunities, primarily, you're going to see, uh, our softball leagues and, uh, pavilion rentals. The softball leagues are run by our department, um, and so therefore, we generate revenue from that. Um, you may, um, just as note, because we have GCYAA, we have a youth soccer association, those groups take on all the operating costs, and therefore, they also basically take with them those revenues. We're not going to have revenues when we're not operating it. Um, and, and often, the relationship between expenditures and operating costs is always tied to revenue. So, uh, that's a theme, um, that, that I'll probably come back to here this evening. Um, some of the numbers I wanted to mention, like softball, for example, uh, we are a little lower this year. Part of that is because some of the, uh, teams have left, um, there are some needs for investing into the lights and the fields. So, again, when we aren't investing into the, uh, the amenities, then we sometimes can lose revenue, uh, on them. Our staff is working really hard to bring those teams back because they're really valuable for us. The pavilion rentals, we had 164 rentals last year, um, and, uh, let's see, where's my note on that? Um, and we also do provide free rentals to a lot of our community groups. So, we just want to recognize, again, these are the services that Parks and Recreation is providing to the community. We're not out here trying to profit off individuals, we're offering services to make our community better. So, overall, you'll see, uh, our revenue projected for this year is about 33,000, uh, next year, we're hoping to get back up to 43. Um, looking at our staff, or our expenditures, that's the appropriation section, really about half of that, like most of the budgets, are tied to staffing, all the different line items related to it. Um, within the Parks budget, there's no dedicated full-time employee, what you'll see are percentages of the Parks Director, that's myself, and our Ice Rink Manager. Uh, so that's how we spread administrative costs over multiple departments, we take it by percentages. Um, so you'll see those numbers reflected in here, um, and then our part-time staff is, uh, the bigger line item there. Those part-time staff are our park attendants. When you have over 300,000 visitors, uh, there's a lot of litter to pick up, a lot of replenishing, monitoring, and caring for the parks. Um, so those staff are busy. Uh, we have 44, or 42 garbage cans in city park alone that are, are changed by hand by our park attendants. Um, and, uh, let's see, we also have staff coordinating, uh, the reservation process for pavilion rentals, so there's some administrative office staff also coming out of this budget. Um, I do want to note, DPW does provide grass cutting, they have a, uh, a smaller budget line in their budget that covers those things. Uh, we try to do the smaller, smaller things that we can, whether it's painting, uh, those volunteer workdays. I believe I had learned today that we are going to see a small maintenance line in here, um, which is great because, um, our operating costs, if you go down to operating supplies, that's materials and supplies for cleaning, uh, those doggy poop bags, paint, other small maintenance items, wood chips for the playgrounds. Uh, we only are budgeted right now, uh, $10,000, so for eight parks, uh, that can be, uh, can go very quickly. Um, and even, uh, we were hoping to purchase, uh, uh, equipment to drag the fields, that's 7,000, so you could just see how, how little we're working with here. Uh, so we're trying our best to stretch. So, we're trying our best to stretch it. The additional costs that you see are, I think, kind of self-explanatory, some utilities, our membership to end parks, and so on. So, to summarize that section, the next page is just kind of a look again at that movement from, oh, and actually, I'm sorry, there's one line item I did want to mention. There's a $75,000 WC Parks improvement that's in this operating budget, right under the operating supplies. And I want to touch on that because really, that is the other half of the grant, the expenditure side of the grant from Wayne County. So, really, that should be in the capital budget because there's revenue that offsets it, a grant. I think this is just some of the things that happen when we haven't had a finance director for very much of the last year. These things haven't been corrected. So, it kind of skews the, the total number. So, on the next page, when you see the approved budget was actually 419,000, I subtract that 75,000 to give us that 344, just to compare because that, again, is a capital grant number that makes it look like just a little bit off. So, really, we see this budget being reduced by about 39,000, and we see that in the staffing and operating and a one retirement line. There's a reallocation of that. There was one loss, a one full-time position that was split between Parks and the Ice Rink. We did lose that in this budget season. And of course, we're really not anticipating any drop-off in park usage by the community. But, obviously, we're going to do the best that we can with what we have to work with. Any questions on Parks? Okay. And I'll keep going to Ice Rink.
Sorry, Mayor.
Councilmember King.
I do have a question, maybe before Mr. Gibbons. You talked about adding that maintenance repair line item. Do we have an idea of what we'll be able to start that out with for '25, '26?
In the budget you'll be presented with at the end, it has 5,000 in it right now.
Okay.
I hope throughout the year, we find some opportunities to increase that. You know, if you're going to have parks, you've got to maintain parks. So, you know, that is a goal, even in a time of, you know, clearly, we have to reduce expenditures. There are some assets and things we own, particularly as the director stated, our, our parks are well-used by our citizens and neighboring citizens. So, we want to keep that maintenance up. It just didn't make her slide, but it's been added in to the budget presented to you at the end of the meeting tonight.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the Ice Rink, the 759. So, the Ice Rink does generate a decent amount of revenue. It sells ice to various groups and users. I won't go through all the revenues, and I will say, at the back of your packet, I did provide a little more in-depth of each line item, just giving a sentence or two to describe them. So, if you're ever curious, you can go back and look at those. I think the Ice Rink is fairly well-labeled. Sometimes, there's some changing in who's buying the ice. So, if one group goes down in ice, typically, another group is going to pick it up and buy it. So, there's not a whole lot I'm going to note, I think, here. I mean, the revenues are ice rentals, concessions, open skate fees, some advertising, and you can see we are expecting around 254,000. I think that's a little low. We actually think it's going to be a little higher, but that's what's on the sheet. And then, to look down at the staffing, again, the full-time staff for the Ice Rink is a percentage, it's 70% of the Ice Rink Manager. I think I am 10% at the Ice Rink. And then, all those part-time staff that make up the different positions, from skate guards, concessions, to Zamboni drivers, and supervisor. Let's see, see if there's anything else. You know, beyond that, there's office supplies, janitorial supplies, operating supplies, concessions. You know, in the Ice Rink, there is a handful of equipment, building maintenance, including repairs and contractual. So, again, we're talking about compressors, HVAC units, all those equipment and systems that are involved in maintaining the ice. A few other small items plus utilities. That kind of summarizes that. And on my summary page, we're just going to see that approved budget from last year to the proposed this year is a decrease of about 23,000. Again, that's really just reflecting some decrease in staffing. And again, we are planning on the same hours of operations, so just looking to maintain with some less resources. And next up is Radcliffe. So, I'm going to start with this overview slide. Last year, the approved budget was for 1.3 million. This year, we're looking at 877,000. So, that is a pretty significant reduction. What you can see in between was that we knew that the budget was being strained, and so corrections and reductions have already been occurring. This year is going to come in just, just over 1 million. But, it's a pretty significant reduction in our revenues. You can see, you know, we are not going to quite hit 500,000 this year, but we are looking to hit that next year, which is a pretty high target considering some of the reductions we're going to be dealing with. But, let's dive in and look at what exactly those reductions are, at least on paper. So, what we're looking at first here are the expenditures for the Radcliffe budget. And I've highlighted on this page the three areas where we're seeing where these reductions are coming from. The staff reduction is where we are getting, really, 75% of the reduction occurring. So, I've highlighted salaries and wages and part-time, so combined, you know, it was 574,000, it's down to 310,000. That's $264,000 less. And then, there's additional sort of reductions with the associated benefits. So, we'll dive into that a little bit more, but I just wanted to highlight, like, that's the numbers we're talking about, which is significant. Another area that has some of the reductions I was going to highlight is operating costs. So, we're seeing that budget go down from 80,000 to 40,000. So, operating supplies are all of the materials and supplies that are purchased for a variety of things. So, from programs, everything from the transportation for seniors to the supplies, the craft projects, just all of the costs that are often offset by the revenue from the program fees. But, you still have to have those expenditures in here, so that's been reduced. Another line item that came out is the maple wood utilities. So, we see a reduction of 64,000. I was asking you to see those taken out. Obviously, they don't, the revenue for maple wood are somewhere in a different account, and so now, the, these costs associated with maple wood are going to be somewhere else outside of Radcliffe. But, let's talk more about the staffing. This slide is just highlighting and illustrating through the colors. Yeah, this is a bit of a deeper dive. Again, 75% of our, of our 500,000 reduction is in staffing costs. So, it's full-time, part-time, associated costs and benefits. So, this is what it looks like on paper. Well, what does this mean to the operation, right? The next slide, you know, these are the, the people behind the numbers. We have anywhere from 25 to 30 people that have been on the Radcliffe payroll for the past year, ranging in roles and hours worked. So, some are working three hours, some of us are full-time or beyond. There is an org chart in your packet at the back, and listed on this slide is the roles on the side. The administrative roles, that's myself. Again, you see that 70%. That's how it's set up in the budget. We have one Dance Express coordinator who will be remaining full-time. And then, our three positions that are being reduced to part-time from full-time are our building manager, our senior coordinator, and our recreation specialist. Those positions are remaining. They're just going down 11 hours in each one, and of course, losing the benefits that go with them. In addition to that, the part-time positions are also seeing, you know, a very, very different look. And actually, I'm going to go to the next slide, the green chart. This is, this is the best way I could try to put on paper the different positions, what we currently are in the light green, and then, what they're moving towards. It's really hard to articulate what the loss of full-time positions mean. There's levels of commitment, dedication, working beyond the hours, working after hours, that are really going to be missed. And in our, in our part-time roles, you know, it's hard, we basically have buckets to work with. One bucket is our full-time. The other one is all of the part-timers. And so, one thing that a lot of people don't realize is our, our part-time bucket does fund the food pantry coordinator. So, that funding comes out, that's going to remain. It's just not an associated cost often with Parks and Rec. We certainly aren't generating revenue. But, again, it's a service that our department is providing, and it engages with many volunteers, and we know it has a lot of community support. Our dance instructors are staying. That program generates a lot of revenue. It's very big and has been successful. The prices are really affordable. And we are going to be doing some increases. We're going to be seeing non-resident fees go up, but by and large, those positions are staying. Where we're really losing are the extra building assistance. We don't really have activity assistance budgeted. So, a lot of it's going to depend on how we all shake out, meaning what happens to our current full-time staff? Are they staying? Are they leaving? There's going to be a period of uncertainty until we know exactly who is here and, and how to budget these positions with the amount of money we have left. It's going to be very tight. And as we, let me see, I make sure I'm touching on everything. Yeah, I'm going to look at the next slide because really, what we're looking at is significant staff reduction, both full-time and part-time. This is ultimately a downsizing of our department, downsizing of the services. There will be some service changes expected. Talk about each of those in a moment, but basically, hours of operation, programs available, and some revenue capacity that ties to programming. Before we get into those key service changes, I want to talk about the revenue in Radcliffe. Let's see. Again, Parks and Rec services do create revenue through some of the same things, concessions, program registrations, rentals, a few other grants. Here, you can see the 2023, '24 actuals where, you know, Radcliffe generated over half a million dollars in revenue. The target for this year was 504,000. We are going to be a little bit short, although I think we'll get a little closer than this target. But, we see that next year, we've got very lofty targets. I think what that is reflecting is, you know, the vision to, to go out and get more revenue to sustain Radcliffe. And again, raising some fees, adding some non-resident rates, but really focusing on how can we increase revenue? But, a couple of lines I want to go through. The very first one, our senior center staffing. This is the Alliance of Aging, or I'm sorry, the, I lost track of that. Senior Alliance, there it is. That's a grant program that our senior coordinator manages. It brings in around 10,000 to offset the senior coordinator position in some of the programs. Below that is the ED, EBDP, that's Evidence-Based Disease Prevention. That's the grant program that helps bring those arthritis exercise programs that are donation-based. So, they're very affordable for our seniors, very popular. And then, moving down, we see concessions out of, well, the Radcliffe store, which is concessions. I highlighted other center revenue, just I wanted to explain that. Again, those are all the program registrations. So, that's the revenue side of all the kind of materials and supply. It's the participation in mostly the youth programs or special events, like a daddy-daughter event, you're going to see go into this account. So, that's really a programming line item. Below that, the center rental, these are all the one-time rentals. So, a birthday party, or maybe a business that's doing a short-term rental, or even our tumbling or our cheer program. Those are center rentals, not to be confused with rent, which is our long-term to renters of T-Lab and Wayne County Metro. I think the other numbers are fairly self-explanatory. We do have a couple of donation accounts that are directly tied to food pantry. The, drawing a blank on them right now, Dance Express, and I know Commission on Aging, maybe is in there. Another line item that I want to mention, a little asterisk at the bottom of my page, the CDBG does have a senior activity coordinator fund or credit that is of $20,000. That doesn't show up in our budget. It's over in the 676. I think it's a miscellaneous account. It doesn't really say senior coordinator over there, but we know that this is tied to us. So, while it's not in our budget, I'm trying to show that there's a lot of things that are meant to support these programs and these positions. So, those are, right on this page, there's almost 35,000 in grants that are supporting senior programs. Okay. I think I'm going to go move on to, so what do all those numbers mean, right? You know, a reduction in staff certainly is going to affect services. Hours of operation, our building management, youth programs, senior programming, and spaceports. So, I'm going to go through each of these, starting with hours of operation. So, before, we were focusing on budget reduction efforts. We were open 68.5 hours a week. That's Monday through Thursday till nine, well, 8:30 to nine, Friday, 8:30 to 8:00 PM, Saturday, nine to four. What we're looking at for the summer is going to be, is going to coincide with some construction work. So, this is part of this reset idea. We're going to really scale down in the summer, going down to 20 hours a week for 12 weeks, basically, Monday to Thursday, nine to two. That means being closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. This is the slower part of our operation. We don't have dance, but that is a big adjustment. September to June, we can return to primary, to similar to what we have now, Monday to Thursday, 8:30 to 9:00 PM, Friday, Saturday, nine to one. So, a little shorter there. That is almost, no, it is 1,000 hours less from last year, a 25%, you know, reduction in hours of which were open. So, again, if I flip the page, what that, you know, really means, you know, we're, we're trying to take this opportunity to focus on construction, to figure out what we're going to look like in the fall and how we can maintain the key things. It does mean reduced availability and accessibility for the community. It primarily is affecting unscheduled drop-in activities. So, we build around our programs, right? Dance is what we build around. That's the busiest. It has revenues going with it. Some of our other drop-ins either don't have fees or not enough fees to offset our staffing. So, that's why we're seeing those kind of on the, you know, on the cutting, on the chopping block for now. The next topic, the building management. So, this is really all the things involved with operating a 78,000-square-foot building. You know, the opening and closing duties, the security, hold on, let me find my mess. I have a mess here. Sorry. Okay. So, this entails the costs and services that go beyond Parks and Recreation. It's management of the 78,000-square-foot building. So, opening, closing duties, general security and stewardship of resources, reporting of incidents and accidents, after-hours support, maintenance coordination and tracking, staff, like scheduling, training, supervising, and general ownership of building. And then, there are some of the recreation services, the management of software, all the money handling, concession management and purchasing, our emergency action plan, and so much more. On top of that, we're providing overhead support to FRC. Um, on top of that, we're providing overhead support to FRC, Food Pantry, Veterans, Wayne County Metro, T-Lab, and programs like the AARP Tax Service. Um, other than Veteran, or other than Wayne County and T-Lab, we don't generate any um, you know, revenue from, from these programs. Again, this is part of our services, we're providing overhead from utilities to uh answering uh, you know, helping uh redirect their guests or people coming to their programs or receiving packages, all of those things that are happening on a day-to-day basis. Um, the amount of time spent on these duties has really uh gone beyond what, what Maplewood would have entailed, just based on the size of our building. Um, so the key service changes we're gonna see when we reduce this position, I have to say, this uh person is our building manager. Uh, I don't know if she's ever worked under forty hours, um always going over because this job is, is uh so encompassing. Um, so I think what's going to uh occur, we're gonna just have less oversight and building-wide supervision. Uh, when we downsize, we're not gonna be um, be able to keep up with all the other happenings. Uh, we're gonna be seeing some of that coordinator staff doubling uh and being on the front desk. Um, you know, covering some of those shifts. Um, it does mean less time for programming uh or doing rentals and things that, uh you know, could generate revenue or just have more Parks and Rec services. So those are some of the uh possible outcomes. Um, and not having a dedicated full-time staff assigned to manage and care for this building. You know, when we got this building, I had heard that Schoolcraft had two full-time maintenance uh positions onsite. And so um, it is a large building, there are things happening all the time. I think a lot of these duties will fall on me as the Parks Director. Um, I'm already feeling it, just uh when we're trying to get the building manager to forty hours. So when, when they go to twenty-nine, um it's just a lot more time spent in that building management role. Um, and for me, um, you know, it's, some of this is outside the Park and Recreation responsibility. So it's gonna be a tough uh area for us to navigate, where we find that balance, where um, you know, we can support uh the building but also be true to our, our mission. Um, youth programming, so we have um had a full-time youth programmer, rec specialist. Uh, we've seen a lot of programming added, uh these are the classes, um special events, holiday things, um year-round classes, camps, activities. Uh, what we're gonna do is, is try to keep the key things as best we can. Um, but there will be some reduction of offerings, and I think a little less stability to that position and that role. Um, we'll just resize the offerings to fit um, you know, a part-time role. Um, the next is our senior programming, and I know we've gotten a lot of inquiries about this. Um, you know, let's see here. It could be more. Too many favors, okay. Um, you know, we've been getting a lot of questions about what impact this is gonna have on our seniors. Um, first, I wanna look at what the role is dedicated to. So our senior coordinator is handling grant management, we've already mentioned a few grants. Uh, the fitness room activity, um which is, includes silver sneakers, all the s- senior memberships, um and all the classes, events, and trips that are geared for seniors, and is also our liaison to the thrift shop and the Commission on Aging. So these are the things that um fall to our senior coordinator. Um, you know, some of this, the service changes, we're gonna aim to maintain the majority of our classes. Um, I provided a list to a council member uh last week that just bulleted out everything we're still gonna be able to do, and then the things that at the moment we're not gonna be able to do. Um, the reduced offerings are really centered around trips, lunches, and a couple of the bingo classes. Uh, these are things that were either added at the time uh in the expansion, when this position went full-time, and they're also some of the more time-consuming. Um, it doesn't mean that these, some of these aren't gonna be able to come back. Uh, but until we stabilize our staffing, um, you know, I think that some of these are going to be missed. Uh, but I know I've gotten, uh, you know, the Commission on Aging is very interested in helping out. Uh, so I think there's, you know, again, we're gonna make the best of what we have to deal with. Um, Spaceport and eSports, currently Spaceport, this is the video game uh room, uh operates thirty-two hours a week after school, most Monday through Thursday and on Saturday. Um, it's all, eSports is used by the Garden City Schools, they've got a high school team, and they have a middle school club. Uh, we do not have funding to maintain the current operation past Memorial Day. Um, so again, this is a part-time staff person, um I think we'd need probably fifteen thousand. Um, but we don't have that right now. Um, I am exploring partnerships with the schools. Uh, I met with the superintendent, who's willing to uh keep the members, the gaming memberships alive, uh to pay for those uh and keep, that's about four thousand dollars, um just keeping our memberships, so that we don't shut down the entire room. Uh, what that's gonna allow us to do is to explore some other possibilities for how we can keep it open. Uh, can we find an independent contractor where we maybe do a split? Um, and of course, we're gonna have to probably go to memberships and, and drop-in fees for this room, but it could still be available for rentals, um, you know, and maybe an after-school club, uh club or membership. So these are things that we are looking into, uh but they're hard because that room is beautiful. We know that technology uh is going to become obsolete, we can't just sit on it for ten years and hope, um, you know, so we're looking at creative ideas uh to deal with that. So, you know, there are significant operational changes ahead, just based on the available budget. Um, we are looking for sort of a soft close, I guess we're calling it, over summer to reset the operation. We do have the construction projects coming on, the schools are doing the road as well, so there's a lot going on. Uh, but we really wanna refocus on, well, what can we, what are we gonna look like in the fall and what can we uh sustain? Um, we are gonna look to rebuild, look for those creative partnerships. Um, there's so much potential there, I think that's what we've seen the last year. Uh, the community really loves Radcliffe, has a great energy to it, you know, from the plants to the care and the love. Um, I have to give a shout-out to all the staff that have endured so much to get to where it's at. It's a very difficult time in the department, just with people losing full-time positions. Um, it's hard to navigate, um but we do, we're very lucky to have some exceptional um people on staff in Parks. Um, I'm gonna end with uh a little bit of metrics for us. The National Recreation and Park Association um has a cool feature, that's sort of our national um organization uh in our profession, Parks and Rec. Um, they, you know, a lot of times people wonder, well, should parks meet their cost? What's, what's a expected kinda service arrangement for Parks and Rec? Um, I'll start by saying there is no typical or standard that's across the board. Every community is different, in size, in amenities, in values, it's just different. Um, there are ways to compare with other cities our size. One number I was really interested in is that revenue to operating, a cost recovery. So uh a national average for a city our size is a twenty-five percent cost recovery, right? So every hundred dollars we spend, uh twenty-five dollars is being made up in a revenue. That's a s- uh average. Um, so how are we lining up? Um, the next page looks at our three departments individually and then as a, as a whole. Um, you can see Parks, our non-fee uh department by, by and large, uh has a lower cost recovery. But still, that's not bad for a free amenity, uh for the community. It's a net loss, meaning two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars of taxpayer money is going towards uh our eight parks. Um, the Ice Rink has a lot more capacity for revenue, we saw that, um their cost recovery is at fifty-one percent. Um, and we see the net loss of two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand. Radcliffe came in, and these are numbers uh based on what's being anticipated for this year. Um, so Radcliffe this year is going to uh be at forty-five percent. So again, thinking of the average of twenty-five percent, we are above that, not quite double, but we're above that. And I think that's important to share with our community because it's saying that we are being responsible with the resources we've given. And when you look down at the total of all that, and we can see uh our taxpayers are spending just over a million dollars for our Parks, our Ice Rink, our Radcliffe, everything I talked about tonight. If you wanna divide that by twenty-seven thousand residents, um I know there's babies in there and stuff, but using that number, that's forty dollars a person uh for a year to get all of the services uh that I've talked about tonight. So I really believe in the value of what we're doing when I, when I look at those numbers and I reflect on them. Um, you know, I'm very honored to be a part of this team, um doing all this work in this community. Um, and so my last slide, moving forward, um, you know, the best that we can do is work hard, build that community trust, um and do our best to provide exceptional services with what we have to work with. Um, we're gonna finish the grant spending in ways that will sustain the current operation. Uh, that's really important to us, we don't wanna add more things that we can't operate. What can we do with this money to help us sustain what we have? Um, and then, you know, if the community is wondering, there's, um, I'm interested in finding out from the community, what is their interest in a Parks Bond for capital investments? Um, or a Parks and Rec-operating millage to develop dedicated funding? You know, many communities choose to do a millage, um I've seen communities do a millage. I worked in a community that also had a council resolution, a Fairness Resolution Act, where uh council passed that you couldn't cut Parks at a higher percentage of any other budgets. I'm not saying that we do that here, but those are the ways that our community uh and council can help protect and sustain, uh not sustain, but um invest in Parks and Recreation Services. Um, ultimately, I think it's uh up to our community, uh the residents and council, uh to see where we go. So that's it, thank you for your time, uh questions?
Okay, council, comments, questions? Councilmember Karafotas.
I wanna reiterate, you know, the reduced hours, that's what you mean when you say soft close, Radcliffe isn't closing. We're just going down to, to reduced hours.
Kinda like a business hours.
And that's during construction, so we can get the gym built and get things going. So obviously, when the gym's built, we're gonna have additional programs available, more things to do for kids, but we just gotta get there through the summer, so, okay.
Questions, comments from council? Mayor?
Councilmember King. Uh, just a clarification on the Spaceport and eSports. You mentioned fifteen thousand, is that um with the school support? I know the school, we're talking about the school maybe covering uh all the membership fees for the, for eSports and Spaceport?
Yeah, the schools, uh, we're talking about a four-thousand-dollar number, forty-two hundred, that's the fees to keep the gaming memberships for all of the eSports and all of the Spaceport uh gaming systems. The fifteen thousand is purely the staffing cost for a part-time employee for kind of a uh September through May, um the after-school hours, um because we are, I mean, we are very busy after school, just with the middle school. So that's, um, you know, if there's any uh donors in the crowd on TV, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. Further comments, questions from council?
Mayor.
Mayor Protemdo.
I'd like to thank Erica Smith for all her efforts through these trying times. I know it's not easy, keep up the good fight, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafotas.
One more question about the senior programming. Um, just like us and everywhere else in America, senior alliance um budget is being cut severely. Um, and I'll find out more about that this week at the Board of Directors meeting. But have we reached out to them to see if there's anything else that they could do for us?
Uh, no, not this time.
But I will on Thursday.
Things that we wanna do, um.
Okay, I'll ask on Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other comments, questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is our Family Resource Center, and that'll be our Resource Center Supervisor, Mr. Sean Hahn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm not much of a public speaker, but if you'll bear with me, we'll get through this just fine. Uh, I'm gonna try to be quick. The Family Resource Center has been providing services in Garden City for a very long time, and our mission statement is uh to, we are dedicated to helping every child have the nurturing and support to become a healthy, caring, responsible, educated member of the community. So our goal is to work with youth in Garden City and in the surrounding area. Our, our program began in nineteen eighty-five, is the earliest that I can find record of it. Doesn't mean it's the earliest that it existed, but it was a youth assistance program. We were working with Wayne County, uh we have developed further beyond that in nineteen ninety-five. We started working with Westland Youth Assistance. We continue that relationship to this day. We used to run programs side-by-side with them, now we do more collaborative things, but we, each program runs its own thing now. Um, we have, have started working with Garden City Public Schools in nineteen ninety-eight. In two thousand and eight, we got the First Contact Grant. It used to be called many other things, they've changed the name over the years, so I put down the other names on here, but they're not really all that important. And we also started working with RightTrack. Um, we continue to collaborate with all of the different uh agencies and organizations that we have over the years. We provide a variety of services, intensive case management, twenty-four-seven support from our case managers and staff. So just so you guys are aware, every staff person at the Family Resource Center is a case manager in addition to whatever their other duties are. So whenever we do an intake meeting, whenever we meet with a family, we provide our personal cellphone numbers to those families. They have access to us all of the time. We also provide mental health and social service referrals, so if somebody comes to us and they need services beyond what we can offer, we help get them set up with who they need to get set up with. Uh, prevention, intervention, and diversion programming for youth and their families is our primary service. That's our reason for being here, we help keep kids out of the court system, we help keep kids out of um consequences for their tickets. I, obviously, council notwithstanding, I don't know any other adults who have made it to adulthood without committing some kind of mistake at some point in their life. And so our program allows the youth who have been the unlucky ones, they got picked up for those mistakes, to continue their lives without having to have that follow them for, for years and years. We provide academic tutoring, intake assessments, individual group counseling, parenting uh education, welcome baby baskets for Garden City residents specifically. We're funded through the First Contact Initiative, which is currently, our current contract with the county, it's a three-year grant totaling up to four million seventy-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. I say "up to" because our program is funded on a fee-for-service basis. So that means if we provide the service, we get paid for the service, if we don't provide the service, we don't get paid for the service. So that's the maximum that we could bring in for this grant, but it's not a guaranteed number, just so you guys are aware of that. Wayne County reserves the right to extend the duration up to one year on up to two separate occasions. Our current term ends May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six, but could be twenty-twenty-seven or twenty-twenty-eight. And historically, they, they have been renewing or extending the grant every time. They usually take the maximum amount, I don't know if it's because they don't want to read through a whole bunch of RFPs again, but they, they usually extend it. So I'm pretty confident that twenty-seven or twenty-eight is gonna be our year that we have to do another one. Uh, we have really solid consistency with this grant as well. The original grant in two thousand and eight, that was written by Monica Fulton, ended up being adopted by the county as their template for the RFP that they use. And so when I update our grant, I'm updating essentially directly from the template that they're using for everybody. Uh, and we also, we consistently score in the top for the youth assistance programs for our compliance audits, so I don't think that they have any desire to get rid of us at this point. We're also funded through the RightTrack Child Care Fund. Um, we are a subcontractor for Growth Works, so we provide services for the surrounding area. We take predomin, for, for the most part, we get all of Dearborn Heights, we get a couple of the other surrounding areas for their court referrals, and then we also get Garden City, obviously. Uh, Westland has a few communities that they receive, Wayne has a few communities that they receive, it's, it's split up pretty evenly. Uh, but we take anybody who is living closer to our office than to any of the other youth assistance programs. Somewhere between sixty thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is anticipated annually from this RightTrack program. It is determined based on referrals, we don't get to decide which youth come to us through RightTrack. They get sent by the courts to Growth Works, Growth Works determines where the best place for their programming is, they send them to us if we're the best option, but that means that we don't, we, I can give you a range for what I expect, but I can't give you a final answer 'cause I don't have any control over it. The One-Tenth Mill is also CWW money, and that's a portion of the Wayne County Jail Millage that is uh reserved for ser- services for at-risk youth. So that's a little over twenty-five thousand dollars that comes in every year. Um, so we can expect that that is coming as well. And then I just, again, First Contact and RightTrack, these are fee-for-service, so it's all based off of what we actually do and the work that we're putting in. so it's all based off of what we actually do and the work that we're putting in. So, for FRC staff, I forgot I had a button. Minimum requirements for FRC employment, you must have a bachelor's degree in sociology, social work guidance and counseling, psychology, or criminal justice. You must receive the MJI certification within two years of employment. That's the probation officer certification. For some reason, the state legislature decided that people who are not probation officers were required to get the certification to be probation officers. So, we had to figure that out. McBapp certification is a prevention certification for substance use and abuse prevention. You can, our staff are required within the first two years of employment to obtain either a CPS or a CPC, Certified Prevention Specialist or Certified Prevention Consultant certification. You must have demonstrable experience working with at-risk youth and their families in a prevention, intervention, diversion, or social work setting. And you must complete the mentor training, which is hosted by Westland Youth Assistance, but I run about half of it along with their staff over there. Within one year of employment. And so, those are some of like the bare minimum requirements. We're working with people's kids. We're working with families that are in at-risk and high-risk situations. We're working in a field where if you screw up, there is a good chance that you are going to significantly negatively impact somebody's life. So, we take it very seriously when we're hiring staff, when we're training staff. It takes about a year for us to get comfortable handing off real responsibilities to a new hire. We have, our newest person right now is going to be hitting their year this month. And they just received their first group that they're responsible for leading. They've been training in the group so far. And they have a caseload, and that's going really well, and we're very, we're very proud of Kadra. But it takes about that long to really be able to get somebody ready to be able to do the type of services that we're providing. Because it's important. You don't want to hand your kids off to people who don't know what they're doing. So, we make sure that everybody knows what they're doing. Our current team is six total staff. We have four GCS PPA full-time, one contractual full-time, and one part-time. And all six of us have full case management duties. We're, we're in all of the programs. We're meeting with the kids. We're in all of the groups. We also are an internship site for several universities in the surrounding area. And so, we get the opportunity to test out some of the future potential staff that are going to be coming in during the time while they're still in school. I wanted to emphasize the importance of the quality of staff that we have. I mean, I've been with Family Resource Center for fifteen years. Zach has been with Family Resource Center for a similar amount of time. Kelly, I think, is approaching ten years. Most of our staff has been with us for eight or more years. We have very good retention of staff. Most youth assistants can't say that. One of the other youth assistance programs was recently boasting that all of their staff had been there for fifteen months or more. So, they, there is a pretty high turnover rate in this field. So, that's, I wanted to emphasize that because obviously, the largest portion of our budget is going to be staffing costs. I have it broken down. Twenty-three, twenty-four revenue versus expenses, because that's the last full year that I have access to. I wanted to give you an example of a full year. And then, our year-to-date for this year, and then what our expectations are for next year. So, the twenty-three, twenty-four, our First Contact revenue was a little, little over eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Our CWW was sixty-five, sixty-five thousand. And we did receive a donation from a local church that we appreciated greatly. And that totaled our, our revenue up to nine-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars. Our expenses, we had two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand on wages. So, this was before our sixth employee was hired. So, that's one of the reasons why that number is so, so different from the ones that you're going to see coming up. Same thing with other benefits. I tried to simplify this. So, all wages, part-time, full-time, comp time, vacation payout, everything, all of that stuff is listed in wages. And then, other benefits is every other employment-related benefit. So, that was three-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand. Operating and office supplies, thirty-seven thousand. Miscellaneous, which encompasses like telephone, dues, meetings and conferences, education and training, all of those things, was four thousand. And then, personnel service reallocations. So, our police chief brought that up during his presentation, that that is an area where funding for the police comes from our grant based on their participation in working with youth. So, in that last full year, we were able to bring in and provide to them to reimburse for their staffing, two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars for the police department in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Year-to-date so far for this fiscal year, we have brought in, and this might have changed, I printed these about three, two weeks ago. So, this is possible to have changed because our billing for another month may have come in. But approximately five-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars have come in for First Contact, sixty-seven thousand for CWW, which is already a little bit more than all of the twenty-three, twenty-four year. We did not receive any donations this year, but our total revenue year-to-date is six-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars. And our total expenses year-to-date are, as you can see here, but it, it bounces out. So, our anticipated Personnel Service Reallocation estimate for this year is a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars. But that is assuming that the year stopped today. That number obviously fluctuates. And my, my best guess is that number is going to be higher by the end of the year. We're going to be able to get that number up a little bit. I would like to point out that this year in particular was, is a bit of an outlier. If you go back further years, there's a trend, an upward trend for our revenues that have, has been going on since twenty-twenty. We had a rough twenty-nineteen. And then, twenty-twenty, we managed to get back to even, even with COVID and everything else that was going on. And since then, we have been able to grow fairly consistently over the remaining years. But last year was, this, this current year was a little bit of an outlier. Our summer, summer enrollment dipped in a way that we hadn't seen previously. I'm fairly certain it's a blip. I wouldn't be too worried about it. But I did want to point out that it's, it's probably a little lower than the year before when we get to the final numbers in June. And then, next year, we're anticipating that that dip is not going to be happening. So, we are anticipating somewhere around nine-hundred thousand dollars in First Contact revenue based on the fee-for-service. We are expecting somewhere around a hundred thousand for the Right Track and One-Tenth Mill, which brings us up to about a million dollars. And then, the wages and other benefits are obviously based off of staffing and set prices. And I don't have any control over those. But the operating supplies, the miscellaneous, and the Personnel Service reallocations, those are all estimates based off of what we can expect that we're going to be doing, working with our youth, working with our families, and the services we're going to be providing. We do have a pilot program that we're currently working on establishing with another local school district to be able to provide some services for them exclusively, for their school resource officers to send people over to us, for their principals if they're having truancy issues, which would, if the pilot this year goes well, then going into full swing next year would represent a fairly significant increase in revenue, which is why we can fairly confidently say we think nine-hundred is about right. Does anybody have any questions?
Council, any questions or comments for Mr. Hahn?
Mayor?
Councilmember Karafotas.
The program that you were just speaking of, that's starting with the next school year in the fall?
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful. I think that's a great program to have our resource officers refer kids to you.
So, our, our resource officers are already doing that.
But I mean, the school's going to take a little.
The other community, it would be, it's Dearborn Heights, actually, that we're talking to that want to send people over to us. And I can't even take credit for it. They reached out to me.
Awesome.
Okay. Further comments or questions from council?
Mayor?
Councilmember Hughes.
Sean, you know, I'm a big fan of what your department, well, this, what FRC, FRC does for our community. And I'm, I'm a big advocate for all that you do.
We appreciate the support.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember King.
No, just one second there. It's great to have a program like this in this local. Yeah, nice job.
Oh, thanks. We've put a lot into it.
Thank you. Further comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, it's not been traditional that we would have FRC present at the budget department presentations, but having been in the Garden City Police Department for as long as I have and seen the impact of FRC in our community, and how unique it is and what is offered in our community that isn't in others, and even speaking with police chiefs who are jealous that we have such an excellent organization in our community, I wanted them to highlight it, too.
Send them my way.
A, a financial, from a financial aspect, this is completely grant-funded. And in fact, it helps support our school resource officer funding in order to allow them to refer children who need this at-risk attention in a way that's positive for our budget. So, I just think it, it's important that the community realize that sometimes they do their work well, but in quiet. And it's nice to be able to highlight that here at council, especially during budget talks, because as we've talked before, and I'll say it probably a couple more times during this process, a budget demonstrates your values. And in this community, we value our youth, and FRC is one great way to demonstrate that.
Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Karafotas.
Just in case everybody doesn't know, the Family Resource Center is located at Radcliffe. So.
That is a good thing to point out, yes. We're located at Radcliffe. And I'm not a hundred percent sure what our operating hours are going to be looking like in terms of FRC office hours. But if you need to get in contact with us, almost everybody in the city has my cellphone number at this point. There was a period of time where it was being used as the main number for the FRC because our phones got shut off at Maplewood before we moved to Radcliffe. So, if anybody needs to get in contact with me, you can reach our office at seven-three-four, seven-nine-three, one-eight-six-zero.
One more thing. Can you just touch on, you know, you talked about kids that, that need help. So, it's, but it's not just for kids in trouble.
That's true. So, we provide this service for kids who have gotten in trouble, who have been picked up by the police, who have been sent to court to try to give them their second chance so that they don't have to have that follow them forever. But about half of what we're doing is trying to identify the kids that are likely to end up in that type of situation. Maybe they're the quiet kid who somebody is going to pick out and make their fall guy. There's somebody who has a little bit of social awkwardness, that they don't have a lot of friends. They don't really fit into the community that they're in. We provide programming and activities for them as well. Those groups are designed to be more fun and proactively entertaining, where you're going to learn a lesson, sort of, you're not going to realize that we're teaching you a lesson while you're playing your fun game versus some of our other programs that are a lot more structured and specific on you're going to do this, and this, and this, and this, and this, and then your ticket goes away. The other stuff that we run year-round for the kids that sign up voluntarily because they want to make some friends, they want to build their social skills, they want to improve their own situations. They're, the kids sign up because they want to be there, not because somebody told them they had to. And the things that we do there are a lot of fun. So, if anybody's interested in some additional supports for anything, feel free to give us a call because either we can help you out, or we can tell you who can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions from the table? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Irwin. Great job. Okay, next.
Sorry, Mayor. I just have a follow-up question regarding the park and rec. Maybe Mr. Gibbons can answer it. Back to the spaceport and esports, that fifteen thousand for the staff. I think we had, there was some discussion about doing like a membership for, using that facility, the spaceport. Do we have to have a line item in there for the staffing to go that route? Like, do you, obviously, there'd be a revenue one for the membership. Do you need the both to counter each other out?
No, at this time, really, within the confines of our part-time budget, you know, we could staff. And if we had an additional revenue source that appears, you know, at the end of this year or in the end, or beginning of next year, or throughout next year, we can make an adjustment to the budget to recognize that, you know, we have additional funding that comes in through memberships and then raise our part-time budget to reflect that through the rest of the year.
Okay.
So, if we start more aggressively using the part-time budget that we've allotted on the expenditure side, but then revenues increase, we can make a judge, a budget amendment to increase the expenditure side to match that, you know, to give credit where credit is due if they're bringing in the revenues.
Okay.
Certainly, we can match that with the fund, with the expenditure side.
I just wanted to verify because so much money was put into that room. And it looked like it was starting to gain some momentum. And with the school wanting to pay the membership, obviously, they're not going to want to pay the membership if we don't actually have it open for the middle schoolers to come over and use. So, I hate to see that room, I guess, closed permanently.
No, but as, as the director stated, going into the summer, and as we do construction, we will seek to utilize every bit of that building that we can in a fiscally responsible manner. And if there's opportunities, whether it's getting renters in there in parts of the building that are being underutilized, or changing fee schedules or memberships rates for non-residents that bring in revenue, that we can then recognize and then grow the programs, I think that's fantastic. You know, our, our changes are mostly due to, we built a model for that building operationally that the revenues currently can't support. And, you know, failure to make that adjustment right now, we'll just continue to lead into a greater bleeding of our general fund that we can't really afford going forward. However, over the summer, it's my full intent that every program, be they senior, youth, teen tech, be maximized to what we can do here in Garden City in a fiscally responsible manner. And I want to see nothing disappear that doesn't have to. But as we're looking at the, the deficits that we have over these last few years, it's difficult to continue at this pace and just hope it works out. We, we have to make the changes now. And then, that should hopefully put us in a place to have an opportunity to grow responsibly.
Thanks.
Okay. On to action items. And action item one is to accept the treasurer resignation and vacancy. As everyone knows, Ms. Erby has turned in her resignation. So, it's up to us to accept that.
Mayor?
Councilmember King.
I move to accept the resignation of Treasurer Dee Ann Erby and declare the treasurer position vacant.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Witt. Further discussion from the table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Item two is to accept the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, Mr. Gibbons.
Thank you, mayor and council. It is, at this time of year, the charter requires the city manager present a proposed budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget year. Before you is that budget, along with an accompanying city manager message. It is good that at this point of the year, we have a proposed budget in place that we could start to work on over the next month or so before we have to be confronted with passing a budget and a, and tax rates and assessment, and water rates. However, it is, it does occur at a time where not everything's final. Not every tax revenue dollar has been set. And not, our water rates, we're still awaiting the water study to arrive from Plant Moran. That said, on the expenditure side and what our plan going forward is, and our revenue estimates, I believe are pretty solid. And I believe this budget represents a transition back to strong fiscal responsibility. And I'll just basically go over my message to council in regards to this proposed budget and hopefully put it into some context. It's my responsibility to present the budget for the city of Garden City. The attached budget outlines, in summary, the revenues and expenditures for each of the city's funds. Over the past several months, Garden City staff and council have spent significant time reviewing our financial policies, capital improvement needs, and long-term sustainability. This budget reflects the collective effort to address our financial challenges while maintaining essential services for the community. It's no secret that as we enter the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, the city faced a two-point-five million dollar deficit as operational cost for exceeded revenues. This two-point-five million dollar deficit, though, is actually, was, was a little master of what we're dealing with this year as the interim city manager and treasurer at the time recognized at first a three-point-one million dollar deficit in their initial proposed budget. They made some changes, a one-time lower payment to MERS in order to give us, to buy us some time where we didn't have to take as much money out of the general fund so that we can reconfigure ourselves to a much more better fiscal, fiscally responsible budget. But to close this gap, you know, the city drew for that two-point-five million from the rainy day fund just to cover the shortfall. And despite balanced budget requirements, it's become clear that spending levels in twenty-four, twenty-five were higher than we could sustain going forward. And the cost of maintaining current operations and staffing outpaced our growth in revenues, creating a structural imbalance that required us to make decisive action this year in this year's budget. This budget responds to these challenges by significantly reducing overall expenditures. This year's budget includes difficult but necessary reductions in personnel with cuts both to full-time and part-time positions across multiple departments. Seventeen full-time positions have been cut. Fortunately, we were in a position where in a lot of our public safety, we had vacant positions where we just don't have to fill. Unfortunately, in other places, parts of the city, we have positions that had to be cut from full-time down to part-time. And then, we, even cutting some part-time positions where we had people in those positions that are not going to be in those positions on July first. that are not going to be in those positions on July 1st. These reductions have been made, made in an effort to align our staffing levels with our available resources. We continue, we want to continue to provide core municipal services as efficiently as possible. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 25-26 includes approximately $55 million in expenditures, with $29,303,000 allocated to the general fund. The budget anticipates utilizing between $373,000 and $723,000 from the general fund balance. So as I stated before, we require $2.5 billion to balance this year, and in its initial budget, we've amended it down, we won't require as much to balance this year, but next year, sort of our worst-case projection puts us between $373,000 and $723,000. It is my goal, though, to get us back through fiscal restraint and, and good policy to have a balanced or surplus by the end of the year, but a budget is a projection, and you want to prepare for worst-case scenario. So if so, if, given worst-case scenario, I believe that we would have to take a much greater reduced amount from the general fund. This conservative estimate, estimate, as I stated, is a good reason to believe we can, we can turn that into a surplus or a balanced budget, and we plan to continue our restrained spending habits. Our focus remains on ensuring that Garden City continues to provide essential services to our residents. We are committed to maintaining public safety via infrastructure and core community services within the constraints of a much more conservative budget. The city's leadership team and I worked diligently to make thoughtful strategic decisions and reductions, and to identify operational efficiencies wherever possible. While it represents a period of fiscal restraint, it also positions the city to rebuild a more stable and sustainable financial foundation for the future. Difficult decisions today will help gardens, safeguard Garden City's long-term financial health, and that financial health is essential to keeping our police officers safe and our citizens safe, and our firemen responding as quickly to a resident in an emergency as needed, to keep our guys safe when they're working on a water main in the middle of the winter in a trench, and to offer the wonderful park system and the community services we've offered for so long. We have to make these decisions now, we have to maintain that healthy fund balance that we have for so long, that took so long to build, and to really identify and continue to prioritize those good Garden City values, and continue forward, and not get ahead of ourselves. I feel like, you know, especially listening to all the wonderful things occurring in parks and rec, that having to dial back some of that great stuff that was going on really hurts. There's no fun about it. As I watched two police cars go on a, a run out the window here tonight, I was really jealous. I miss being in that car and sitting here tonight when I have to make these kind of reductions. My problems out there were a little simpler. Go to the run, deal with the problem. But here, there, it's tough. It's tough to make these decisions, as, as Parks and Rec is discussing the things and the positions and the people that don't have the same benefits and pay that they had prior is rough. But, but at the same time, myself and council has a responsibility to continue to make Garden City a great place to live and a great place to call home in the future, and I think this budget embodies those goals. It makes the hard decisions now. You know, it'd be easy to continue to kick the can down the road and continue to borrow from the general fund, but that won't solve our problems, and that will only lead to these decisions having to be made later, and by either myself or some other council or some other city manager, and that's not fair. We have to make the hard decisions now. We have to look people in the face and say, this is what we have to do to continue Garden City on the path it is. And the Garden City is on a great path. Housing values are rising, crime is down, our essential core services continue to do a fantastic job, and we're meeting our obligations. We have to make adjustments now to continue that, though. I think it's fortunate we're catching this when we have. We still are in a great position to continue well, well into the future. I'm looking forward to council's input in, from, from what I proposed. Welcome to any suggestions or change. We have three council meetings before we'll be at a position to pass the budget, and I'm looking forward to answering any questions or information you require, and looking for any input from any source to make as wise a decision as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you. Right now, the motion is in order to accept the proposed fiscal year 25-26 budget.
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Dole.
A motion to accept the proposal for the fiscal year 2025-26 budget.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Dole. Questions or comments from the table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Karafodis.
I'm just reiterating, so that the public doesn't think we're accepting a budget tonight. We're not accepting the budget. We just received the budget, and we're going to spend the next three weeks going through it and finding out what we need to do before it gets approved, and there's a, there's a public hearing, too, right?
Yes.
So the public can come up and talk and ask their questions about the budget also. So it's not getting approved tonight, it's just getting accepted.
Correct.
Just to clarify any confusion, may I recommend that we amend the motion to be motioned to receive the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 budget and city manager letter?
Mayor Protem Dole.
Yes.
Yeah.
A motion to receive the proposed fiscal year budget for 2025-26 budget.
Okay. Further comments from the table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven-zero.
Did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
I just wondered what you said. All from the public.
That's just on us receiving the, just receiving it. You're going to come up next. Next is public comment. It's not a time to go back and forth. You'll have three minutes, you can make comments. If you have a question, we may or may not get to it tonight, but we'll get an answer to you. Ms. Peace. Pierce, I'm sorry.
I want to talk about the Radcliffe Center. I am one of the seniors. I became a senior at the end of last year, and the first thing I did was show up at the Radcliffe Center to see what you have available for me. It was great. People are wonderful. Danielle, who heads up the senior, was great, the employees. Slowly, everybody got cut, things changed in the place, not happy. Now the hours are changing. We seniors, we get up early in the morning. I walk there five to six, well, six days a week, all but Sunday. And now I know the summer hours will be cut, too. Not happy with that. I use the workout room. I was going to do some of the trips and that, well, those aren't happening anymore. You know, just to read, when they had all the flyers up, just to read all that was inspiring, that you had all this. Well, now there's nothing. Not happy. And I've been here, I've lived in Garden City for 40 years, and I knew when I retired, this is what I wanted to do, and, and take advantage of what Garden City has. Well, that ain't happening. But I know when things get cut. I know the deficit, I get it, the money, all that good stuff, but I'd hate to see you ignore the seniors, or the children, because I think seniors and children are what make up the community. And we're not moving anywhere, we're staying. We pay our taxes, always have, which we all know they're high, but I'd like to see it stay. I know you said that you'd like to see the programs come back. I will hold you to that.
Sounds good.
Because I will be here. I won't go away. But I, I would like to see, in the summertime, maybe the hours on Friday not get cut at least, because three days of not coming to exercise does make a difference for a senior. Just my take on it, you know? But that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I would say, give, give our city manager and our Parks and Rec director a little bit of time. I don't think you'll see as big a difference as you, you think you will. Any other comments from the, from the public? Mr. Gibbons.
Good evening, council and mayor and manager. I'm just here to maybe help this lady's feelings a little bit. I'm with the Commission on Aging Chair, and we are discussing ways to keep, as, keep the seniors' activities as vibrant as possible, working with other entities around the city. And also, you mentioned the children. I'm working with FRC, Kiwanis, and the city to keep some of the programs I already have going, and enrich the lives of children in our community.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? Anymore?
You better not.
City manager, do you have anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
Nothing else this evening.
Mayor Protem Dole.
I have nothing, sir.
Councilmember Hughes.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Councilmember Witt.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember King.
I must add, thanks.
Councilmember Dole.
I just want to thank all the different department directors that came up and gave their presentations, a lot of good information, and as City Manager Gibbons stated, we have several weeks to go, to go through this wonderful book that he gave us tonight. So, thank you all, though.
Lot of trees. Councilmember Karafodis.
Of course I do. I just wanted to say that, I just wanted to reiterate again that, you know, the plan isn't to close Radcliffe. The plan is to do this, hours to be cut during the summer, which we normally cut hours in the summer, and that, you know, figuring out ways to make everything come back and make things as good as we possibly can, that we're not going to forget about the seniors in any way, shape, or form. So I'm going to push through Senior Alliance to see if we can get more money, and I'm sure there's lots of other clubs in our city that are going to help with, with the program need for the seniors, so we're not going to forget about you. It's coming.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Karafodis, anything? You, no. We're, we're done with the public comments, sorry. Councilmember Karafodis, do you have anything else?
Just that we're going to, you know, keep as many things open, and that the senior workout room, I believe, is staying open, along with the availability to walk and do all those other things, so we're going to do whatever we can to keep it open. That's all.
Thank you. I have nothing tonight. No further business, this meeting is adjourned.